Welcome to the October 25th, 2022, 6:30, 6:52 PM City Council Meeting. We do have a quorum, so I'll call this meeting to order. Would you please join me in a moment of silence? On the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, would you please read the rules to speak?
Yes, individuals wishing to speak on public and non-public hearing agenda items must complete a sign-up card prior to the item being introduced. Those wishing to speak on quasi-dutual public hearings must complete a sign-up card and sign the oath. Sign-up and oath cards are available on the table in the chamber. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under petitions from the public present. This opportunity is offered twice in the meeting and individuals may speak at either the first or second petitions, but not both. No sign-up card is required. Citizens shall not comment on any issue more than once during the meeting. All comments except petitions and requests must address a pending issue and citizens will be given three minutes to speak on all items. Citizens wishing to speak on the consent agenda must submit a comment card identifying the items of interest. Speakers shall be given three minutes per item, however, citizens wishing to speak on more than three items shall be limited to speaking for a total of 10 minutes regardless of the number of items identified. All sign-up cards and exhibits being submitted to the city's council shall be placed in the box on the table in the chamber.
Thank you very much, City Clerk. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular city council meetings on September 13th, 2022, September 27th, 5:30 PM, and September 27th, 6:30 PM?
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Minutes accepted unanimously. City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. We have no special recognition or presentations. Our next agenda item is Item 6A, which is the Historic Preservation Board. The terms of regular members Dennis Jones, Tony Shifalo, Deborah Pettick, and alternate member Kirk Davis all expire on 31 October, 2024. Regular members Jones, Shifalo, Pettick, and alternate member Davis have all expressed their willingness and desire to continue to serve on this board and have requested a reappointment for another two years to expire on 31 October, 2024. There are no other applicants currently on file for your consideration.
All right, thank you very much. Council? Member Nelson?
I was just going to say, I don't know if they want to speak or not. However, they have served wisely and faithfully to the city, and I'd be inclined to just so reappoint them.
Obviously, I totally agree with that. I cannot make a motion. We'll move from there and certainly we'll do the things we need to do, but three very outstanding appointees who I feel really enjoy being where you're at, doing what you're doing. You have a passion for it, a love for it. Every time I hear you guys speak here or other places, it's hard to find people like that, and we are honored and blessed to have you with that. Do we need to, anything else? Call the cards?
No cards.
No cards. Do I need to do all of them separate? We can reappoint all at once. All right, reappoint all at once, call the names, and we'll go from there.
In that case, I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Dennis Jones, Tony Shifalo, Deborah Pettick, and alternate member Kirk Davis. I'd move to reappoint them to the Historic Board.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call, vote.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Approved unanimously, and again, with a big thank you, the passion that you serve on that board is exemplary. So, thank you guys very, very, very much. City Manager.
Petitions and requests, sir?
Petitions and requests, yes, sir. That was, that's come up quicker than I expected it. I mean, that was really quick. Petitions and requests, I see none, next.
Okay, hand out, got your handout, do it from last, last time.
I think we got it about four or five times.
Okay, I guess the time's already started. So.
Here you go.
I'm bringing to your attention some disturbing issues about what's going on in the city of Titusville, and that has to do with the dishonesty of our city manager. And I give this to you because this was, this was on the door of City Hall. This was sent to many people, and it says on this, this, with a skull and cross one, it says that "I sent warning to the city, city council, FDEP, Parish Hospital, I even went to the police department, made a, made a report by phone, police department, county health department, and so forth regarding this sewage spill that happened during Hurricane Eon. Sewage in Greenwood Street flowing down cherry, coming out of the manholes and coming out of lift station." Now, on October 11th, if you remember, Mayor Diesel asked our city manager two questions. One of them was, was there another sewage spill? And he ignored this completely. It was a false report dishonest by our city manager. The other one also was a dishonest answer about sewage being stopped on December the 19th of 2020. Both of those are extremely false, outstanding, outrageous dishonesty by our city manager. I think you should do something about it. You see, the thing is, is when he does that, it puts gag orders on a lot of city employees who are witnesses to this event, who know that it's happened. People in the community don't want to disagree with the city manager. But the thing is, it's true. He's, he's, whatever, whether he has some kind of a, what do you call it, an addiction to dishonesty or whatever it might be, but he is flagrantly dishonest on these issues, and the city council is responsible. I have been taught when I was just a kid, you're supposed to tell the truth. He's not telling the truth again and again and again and again. We have all kinds of witnesses. We have photos, we have police reports and so forth. We have police officers seeing this stuff. We have evidence out there that's still there on Greenwood Street where a big puddle of sewage was, it's black. So I'm asking you to do something about it. Are you just going to ignore it again? This dishonesty, flagrant, outrageous dishonesty by our city manager? I can't understand why you would let it go by. It seems that what you're doing is, you're rewarding our city manager for his dishonesty. It encourages him to be more dishonest. I want more time on this because I think you should respond. You have a responsibility for the truth.
Anybody want to extend time?
No, absolutely not, of course not, Mr. Jordan.
All right, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor.
Just so the public know, one of the things this person did was try to destroy my business by, yes.
Hold up, hold up, hold up.
Don't say a word.
Go ahead and sit down so we can, because you had that.
Oh, I thought he might want to say something.
No, 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 he may say something, but that doesn't mean you're going to get to reply.
I'm trying to destroy his business.
Okay, go ahead, have a seat, have a seat, hold up, hold up, hold up. Go ahead.
We have listened to Stan for, I've been on the council for four years. He has consistently basically said the same thing over and over again, and I've been always taught that if you keep doing the same thing over and over again and expecting something different, then that's the definition of insanity.
Hey, don't reply from there.
One of the challenges I've always had was to make sure that I treat everybody fairly. Stan has been, in my opinion, in my life, the nastiest person I've ever met in my life. He is not one who has good character. He is one that doesn't mind trying to destroy somebody else's life by destroying their character, talking about every director that we have at city, the city council members, and to me, it's embarrassing that he just said that he was taught certain things as he was growing up, yet he won't follow the same rules. It is unfortunate to me that we have someone who, in my opinion, is an embarrassment to Titusville, and he doesn't care, and all he cares about is being right, and most of the time, he's wrong. And it's unfortunate to me, he went too far with me this week when my wife had to see something that he taped to the front door of my business. He came to my business, and I'm telling you right now in public, you are not welcome at that business, do not come on my property again. I find you very dangerous unto me, and I'm telling you, I will protect my own. So, Mr. Mayor and Council, to me, we have put up with a lot of stuff with him. He has wasted so much of our time. I have no respect whatsoever for this human being because he has shown that he has no respect for any of us, and I just find it embarrassing. It just saddens me that a man of his age does not have the decency to try to treat everybody with respect. If he doesn't get his way, if you don't agree with what he says, then we're all wrong. And to me, that's crazy because all of us can't be wrong and only one person can be right, especially him. So I would submit to Stan Johnson that he should really change his ways. You're not going to live forever. You talk about being a Christian, but nothing that you do is Christ-like, nothing. And I am embarrassed for you, sir, and the only thing I can do right now is pray for you because it's obvious that you do not care about anybody except yourself. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Hey, no, 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 you don't. Nope. City Manager.
Onto consent, Council? Okay.
Was that, I'm sorry. No, 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 you know what, I apologize. No, come up, come up, come up. Clearly, I got off, off track there, my bad. Thank you.
My name's Joe Hill, I live here in Titusville in Browning. I've got a little office over on Hopkins, and some of you people know me, some of you don't. I've been here. I hate coming up here and complaining about the same thing over and over again, but here I am. Pedestrian lights at Hamilton and Hopkins. I think it was four years I came up here and said, they're not working, they need to do something. I think the first year was, oh, we got it on our work list, it's got a work order, we're going to take care of it. Well, nothing got done, I came back the next year and it's.
Stop the clock, just to clarify, you were talking about sidewalks? What were you?
No, I'm getting to that.
Okay, but you said something.
This is the pedestrian, you can walk or not walk signs.
Okay, I'm just trying to get myself where you are.
Pedestrian signs at the intersection.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, ma'am, start the clock. Thank you.
But I think the second time it was, we're trying to work something up for a grant or something like that, and the third time was, well, the next time, we had COVID, so I didn't come out of my cave for a year. And I think the last time it was parts on order. Well, it's been over a year since I was up here asking about, so I just thought I'd bring it up again. The other thing was the sidewalks. I really think the city ought to look at coming up with some way to improve the sidewalks going down to the high school.
Yeah, that's what you said.
It's, it's just, it's just, it is embarrassing to see those busted up little narrow sidewalks, and you've got all these kids trying to work their way to school. The parents won't let them ride their bicycles because it's too dangerous because there's no safe place for a bicycle to go through here. I know it's congested, I know it's, you know, maybe you could get the school to move their fence back five feet and do something, you know? I would, I really would like for the city to take that serious because I think you're going to have an accident there. You see those kids coming across there, especially up Sycamore, just hordes of them, and they don't even cross at the crosswalk, they walk about halfway up the street and cut across the street half the time. So I think it would behoove the city to try to do something, and I brought this up three years ago. And the other thing is the bikes, bike safety. If you could put a trail or something for the bikes, I mean, it's very dangerous there, it's so narrow, and you get some of these yahoos on a bike, it's got to go the wrong way down the road. So if they're coming at you, you can't move around it if somebody else is coming, you've got to stop and block everybody else up. So anyway, that was the three things.
Was that the bicycle path or whatever you're talking about there is also Titusville High School?
Yeah, it starts at north, everything north of Titus Landing. You lose your bike trails, you lose the wide sidewalks, you go down to a little narrow 1950s sidewalks, and they're busted up and in bad repair in some spots, and, you know, I'm going to just keep coming up here and complaining about it.
No, 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 first of all, I appreciate it, that's the first thing. Second thing, City Manager, we have, somebody can comment on that.
Kevin will be able to provide an update.
Yeah, you're going to say something, go ahead.
Yeah, sir, the traffic signals are in purchasing. We have a million dollars set aside from impact fees waiting for that project to go. It's been designed, took them about two years to do design to do mast arms at that intersection. So those are in progress. Talking to vendors, there's a 20-week lead time on mast arms right now, and that's, you know, that's today.
Yeah, yeah.
So we'll see what it looks like in six months, but, but yeah, that's in purchasing waiting to go out. We can look at the sidewalks. We don't have, this is the first time we've had sidewalk repair funds in a number of years. It's only $50,000 available. We can't use impact fees to expand existing sidewalks because they aren't there, but we can certainly look at the sidewalk network north of Titus Landing. I know around the high school, it is a right-of-way issue. They won't be able to get much bigger because we don't have any right-of-way left unless we're on top of the asphalt, and that's not what you want to do with sidewalks. But we can, we can certainly take a look at it.
Is there a way that we can let him know what's going on with that? I remember, I didn't remember the first issue clearly, but the second and third issue, I do recall you saying, and I'm just wondering if we can like get a phone number.
Well, I actually challenged you guys to walk from Titus Landing up here to the courthouse. I don't know if any of you did it or not, but, but I did challenge you just to see for yourself, instead of driving by and say, yeah, I can see it's kind of messed up. You walk it, you'll see what I'm.
Well, I am real familiar with the backside of Titusville High School.
Well, I would expect.
And to be honest with you, that used to be a place where I would supervise kids going home, and I felt the same way. I can't tell you except for driving north of Sycamore.
There's no sidewalk.
I will say that I can see that it's like, man, there's nothing here. Now, for the most part, I don't think we have too many kids walking that way. They turn left on Sycamore or they go the other way. But still, in all, I would agree, there's not much there. Don't know if we have to have much there, but all the things you've said about behind Titusville High School, I've seen and agree. So if we can kind of just keep him up to date, I appreciate the.
My number's on the card.
Perfect, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Let me try that again, go ahead. Hit your button.
It'd be nice if we could also get updated on that because that issue has come out several times.
And again, and you guys do a great job of that. As that gets updated, I'm sure you'll give that City Manager, he can let us know when we meet with him. So just kind of an update on that as it goes forward. Yes, Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I just have one question. Because it is a very small sidewalk, when a slice of it get broken or whatever, is there a requirement to build to the new standard or you just have to build right back to what the old standard is? Because I'm assuming the new standard is wider sidewalk, is correct?
Yeah, new standard would be five feet, those are four foot, so, normally, we, because we're patching panels, we don't like to make one piece bigger out of a thousand-foot run.
Right.
So usually put back what's there. The minimum sidewalk's ADA requirements, 30 inches, so, so we always ensure that it's enough for a handicap wheelchair to pass. Typically, we don't put back a larger sidewalk unless we're taking out entire blocks, then we could put in a larger sidewalk. The challenge there is we can't get any closer to the road, so expansions would be back away from the road, so there are some challenges along the stadium itself and things where it's an uncurbed roadway, so you don't like your sidewalks to be too close to uncurbed roads because there's no barrier for a car. But that's, those have been there for a very long time. We certainly can look at it if it's simply a trade out of size and we have the funds to do a repair, run through that whole section, we could do that. We can look at that.
To me, it seems to be going with the resiliency that we just had a presentation on, and we want to increase people walking and riding bicycles, and it certainly needs to be wider.
That's a tough place.
I appreciate it, thanks.
Anybody else? Okay, anybody else for not consent for petitions and requests? My bad, not yours.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I believe we might have someone for petitions but don't realize they need to speak here because I have a card that says open question.
Okay.
But nothing else is marked, it's Tim Hansteen.
Well, come on up. Clearly, I don't either.
Hey, Tim Hansteen, Riverside Drive, quick question for you, and probably you're going to say the answer is Florida DOT. So with the new businesses going in, we've got a couple of your students opening the barbecue place, Yay, across from River Palm, and we've got Broom Hildy, new business coming in there, great. We've also got hundreds of new cars coming in that are all going to be at that intersection, Riverside Drive and US-1, and sometimes you wait two cycles to even try to get through that stoplight. So now is when you tell me that's a Florida DOT problem, assure me, please, that someone is taking that to Florida DOT and go do a traffic study.
City Manager.
And by the way, I live next to Carl, so.
We can do, send it to DOT Traffic Ops for review. We can't alter their timing. We maintain the signal, we don't maintain their timing. I know the signals along US-1 are due in the next, I think, year or two to go to the ITS system, which would be automated traffic signals, but we can certainly send it to them. US-1 is the priority, so they will run US-1 capacities first as they would any other primary signals. The main road does take its first priority, so we can, we can send it to Traffic Ops and let them take a look at it.
Okay, so it is FDOT, obviously.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and we're going to communicate with them on that concern, and they control the traffic flow and the light timing, and we can't do anything with that.
Correct. They, they give us the timing in the cabinet, we're allowed to make minor changes to the length of the red because that is what we're allowed to do, we're not, we're not altering the green cycles. So yes, we have a parameter for which we have to keep it in check, and we have to every year sign off with the state that we have kept their signals inside their design parameters.
And you're talking about coming on, where's the three cycle where in front of the new?
Well, Riverside Drive where it comes in, if you're going to go straight across, you go to the high school.
Okay, okay, I know where it is. And that's a slow, that's a, you don't get much light there?
You don't get, even on a good day, even before the conduits, you don't get much light. Now you're going to have, they just got their CO, people starting to move in, and of course, they're starting to turn Riverside Drive into a timing light with the how fast are you going thing, which they're going to have a lot of walkers and runners on that street, you are going to have some issues unless there's some enforcement as well, and I appreciate that not being ceded off too like there was some talk.
Yes, yeah, I remember that discussion. Well, I did, I mean, there was about three or four meetings worth of discussion on that, and I, I remember being kind of, I'm not sure, because having watched Titusville High School students come out, I wasn't sure which was the better, less evil.
Right, right, right.
So.
I just wanted to elevate it to visibility so everyone can keep eyes on that intersection because even without the hundreds of extra cars coming in and.
You make a good point because that's going to really get crazy.
I live at the second, I live at the weird shaped house with the cubicle on top. I'm going to start refusing to go that way, and I'll go down and turn left and cut across and come US-1. I've actually turned right a number of times, I've actually turned right before that stoplight, gone down, made a U-turn, and came back and still made it.
I have, I'll go ahead and say my complaint publicly. I live over Imperial Estates and FDOT got hold of the lights over there on Highway 50, and now what's happening, the light stays green for Highway 50 like forever, and if you're coming out of Key Largo, the number of people that now turn right and do a U-turn has increased, so I don't know, they've made it very much safer by making us wait longer because it's sometimes, it seems like three and four minutes, I'm sure it's two or three minutes, but it's like, you know.
If you're late.
If you're late, you're real late, so you leave early. It takes me longer to get through that light than it does to get to the light from back in the back of Imperial Estates. So I, I say that with a little bit of humor and a little frustration, but I feel what you're saying over there.
Right, and the restaurant's opening, it's not going to get better, so I appreciate it.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Mayor, can I ask a follow-up question?
Oh, yes, Member Stokel.
Just with that, now it makes me curious, so when we approve for those conduits to go in there and we do the traffic studies, are they looking at that or are they just looking at infrastructure and roads? Or how does that even get communicated, I guess, to FDOT?
Well, normally, a traffic study looks at level of service for roadways. In that particular case, they also looked at what used to be there. So that used to have a hotel and a traffic demand before that, so they're looking at the difference. So you probably had a very minor impact to the level of service of any state roads. They probably didn't look specifically at the timing of the intersection.
Okay.
So we certainly could, DOT would have got it because remember, they did permit, permit the closure of Riverside Drive and any alteration to that traffic signal, which would have put new cabinets in, would have put new detection in, and then that was, that was backed out of, so they did look at and were aware of the project. DOT gets, is aware of all the projects affecting the roadways, but.
To know that there wasn't a hotel there currently.
But that's what they look at for, from a traffic standpoint, that's what was there for all those years, so they're looking at the impact of a change in use on a roadway that's built for 32,000 cars a day, US-1. So they're looking at impacts to US-1 more than probably, they probably did do a signal timing delay, they probably didn't see it as a major delay because the signal timing level of service is pretty lenient when you think about Orlando signals are still within level of service, and you may sit for five cycles over there, so our traffic is much different, but their level of service standard is not get a car in every cycle, it may be get every 50 cars passed in multiple cycles, so. And the side road volume does matter when US-1 volume is 32,000 a day and the side road may be less than 1,000, that does play into how they time their signals because they need to move all that traffic out from in front of the high school every day too. So, but we can pass it on to their traffic ops, it's what they do is run their, their traffic system.
Right, thank you.
All right, I see nobody else. Anybody else petitions or requests? All right, City Manager.
Mayor, Council, onto consent. Council, do you have any questions of staff for consent agenda items A through O?
I, Member Robinson?
Yeah, it's just, it's just a question on C and E. I know that it's time to replace those vehicles and the equipment. Do we? Do we recoup any dollars or cents? What's, what happens to the...
We auction them.
Huh?
We auction them.
You auction them all?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? I see none. City Manager.
Council, are there any consent agenda items that you'd like to pull for further discussion? Clerk, are there any cards on consent agenda item eighth row?
Yes, sir, we have one individual on one item and another individual on 10 items.
Mayor and Council, with your permission, I'd like to read the titles for the record.
Thank you.
Consent agenda item 8A, authorize the mayor to sign the 2022 Tree City USA Recertification Application. Consent agenda item 8B, approve the legislative grant agreement with the Department, the Florida Department of Environmental Protection for the Osprey Nutrient Removal Upgrade Project. Consent agenda item 8C, approve the purchase of vehicles for Public Works. Consent agenda item 8D, approve advisability to redo, review the Code of Ordinance to Section 11, 379, solicitation on the rights of way. Consent agenda item 8E, approve the purchase of two Bush Hog tractors for Public Works. Consent agenda item 8F, authorize the mayor to execute modification two to the Florida Division of Emergency Management Lift Station Generator Grant Time Extension. Consent agenda item 8G, approve the water service agreement for 6232 Horseshoe Avenue.
All right.
Consent agenda item 8H.
Where's Bill turning?
Approve Amendment Three with the Wright Pierce Incorporated for the Morning Dove Water Treatment Plant Solids Train Upgrade Project. Consent agenda item 8I, approve Amendment One to the Grant Agreement with the St. John's Management District for the Osprey Nutrient Removal Upgrade Project. Consent agenda item 8J, approve reimbursement resolution 222022. Consent agenda item 8K, approve advisability to prepare an ordinance governing access to city-owned facilities. Consent agenda item 8L, approve work order to AECOM Technical Services Incorporated for the Development Services Review Services. Consent agenda item 8M, approve emergency purchase order for mold remediation services. Consent agenda item 8N, approve the American Rescue Plan Act related contract amendment. Consent agenda item 8O is a contract amendment, approve the contract amendment for the annual stormwater piping installation services contract.
All right, take two. That's a lot. All right, call the cards, please.
For item 8A, we have Tony Shifalo.
8A. Historic lady.
Tony Shifalo, 715 Tropic Street, the historic Norwood House. Just as I am enthused and impassioned about saving old structures and buildings, I am involved and love wanting to save the landscape, our environment, and I'm here tonight simply as a cheerleader for the Titusville Environmental Commission, the TEC, and the programs that they're bringing to you with the help of Ms. Muller, your sustainability person who's just set them on fire. And I'd like to acknowledge and encourage the continued input of Ms. Kay Saint-Hange, who cannot be here tonight. But just as an aside, you know, I was a research and reference librarian for CNN for over 20 years, and I'm here to tell you, her research skills are much better than a lot of those of us who were actually paid and trained to do that work. So I would listen to her, and I think that finally, 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 we're going to be able to move forward. The Tree Team, the Tree City USA has very certain specific requirements that have not been really being done in Titusville, but now with the guidance of the former members of the Tree Team, the scientists, the botanists, the landscapers, the biologists, who had input in that, and working with the Tree Ordinance, and working with Ms. Saint-Hange, who is now also just very heavily involved with the TEC, not as an official member, but as a resource for them. So when the TEC brings you something, it's been well researched, it's been well discussed. I attend those meetings, as well as my own board and the city council, because I am a cheerleader for them, because they're trying to save the environment, what we have left, and also to increase our tree canopy. There are going to be several things that are brought to you from TEC, and I just want to cheerlead and ask you to please seriously consider and do everything possible to help that emerging board. They're going to be really great, and if Hurricane Ian didn't show us anything else, it's beginning to show us the dangers of filling in wetlands and cutting down trees. Thank you.
Thank you.
We just received an additional card for 8A from Kathleen Perez.
Okay.
Kate Perez, 325 South Washington Avenue, Titusville. I'm also here to ask you to, we're on 8A, right?
8A, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so first, I want to ask you a couple of questions. Do, because these are required, but for the Tree City USA, so do we have a Tree Board or Department? Or is that the TEC? Are they counted as our Tree Board?
We have our staff going to come up before us.
The Titusville Environmental Commission serves as the city's Tree Board.
Okay, so that, that's what I thought. All right, and are we spending at least $2 per capita on urban forestry, as required?
Yes, we are. I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but I can get them to you.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to see that. All right, that having been said, I hope that we're willing to start adopting the measures that the TEC recommends to take, and take their advice seriously, since they are the ones with the scientific knowledge to understand the scientific ramifications of the planning decisions that contribute to our flooding, polluted stormwater flowing into our lagoon, and the consequences of burning stumps on large clear-cut lots in residential neighborhoods. I was at the city council meeting, where the council voted in favor of allowing that. And if I recall correctly, Member Nelson and Member Stokel wrote it against, but I'm not 100% sure. That was very surprising to me, because you know you have a lot of people in Titusville with asthma, COPD, emphysema, you know, all these kinds of respiratory illnesses. You could kill someone doing that, burning those stumps in residential. And I remember you, Mr. Mayor, saying, well, they do it at Kennedy, but the ones at Kennedy are designed to burn very fast. It's not the same thing. The stumps here can burn for days and days and days, and we don't know what's on the lot, what chemicals, rubber tires, we don't know what we're burning. So I wish you would rethink that, and I hope the TEC asks you to do that. And that's it.
Thank you. Member Nelson.
I want to add one thing, because I don't know that you guys saw it, but when we did the, looked at the plan, excuse me, my voice is going, when we looked at the plan for the CRA and redeveloping a lot of the streets, those streets were all lined with trees, and that is in our plan. And I thought that was really great, because you were talking about all of the downtown area. So I hope you guys get a chance to look at it, I think it's on the website.
Next car, yes.
We have Stan Johnston.
Stan, before you get started, you've got all kinds to talk about here, and I really want you to talk about them. Whichever you decide to talk about, I want you to talk about them.
Okay, are you ready?
Let me hear what you're gonna talk about, because I'm gonna circle them.
Okay, all right. I don't think we should start the time, my time, I'm talking to him.
Well, no, you're starting, you're, go ahead.
No, but you want me to talk to you about specific questions you want to do?
Hold the clock just a second. Anytime you come up there, you start off by saying what you're gonna talk about. You always say which ones you're gonna talk about. I'm gonna talk about this, 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 and this.
Okay, why, okay, why do you need to introduce me and say, hey, this is what you want me to do?
It didn't start then, it didn't start then, there's only been 10 seconds off, so just tell me what you're gonna talk about. Let's go.
Okay, all right. I'm gonna talk about, first of all, I think you should give me my time, appropriate time, but you're not doing that. So, but I'll start with saying is that I've got several items, and I'm gonna ask for extra time, of course, because I don't have enough time. I got about 10 items to do.
Last, FYI, last meeting, I pointed out, you had 10 minutes, you talked about one.
That's not true.
That is true.
No, it's not. I couldn't buy them two. And I only talked about nine minutes.
And then you said you needed more time.
That's right, I need more time, and you didn't give it to me, because you said you want me to talk about the others, and you, and I had requested time, and you didn't give me any extra time.
We'll stop.
I know you wanted to hear from me.
We only had seven items last night. All right, let's go, go.
I love you, buddy.
I know, I know, go.
Okay, all right. Okay, there's several items. 8B opposed, go ahead, mark that.
Don't forget.
8F opposed, mark that, Joe. 8G opposed. 8H opposed, 8L, 8I opposed, 8J neutral, 8K, here's one neutral, 8J, 8K, 8L, 8N, and 8O. Are you ready? Okay, are you ready? So I have a handout for you, I have a handout for you. I think Mr. Fitzgerald recognized this handout, it was on his door of his...
Just talk about, just talk about the topic.
No, that's what I'm talking about.
Don't, don't mention names, just talk about the topics.
When he interrupts me, please stop the clock.
Go, go, go.
Okay, but give me my time, because I'm even asking for extra time, so you can hear what I have to say. I know you want to hear what I have to say, Dan, and you want to hear about all these items, so please give me extra time. So, because I want to help you out. Okay, this is, this is a handout, it has to do several items, I'm gonna go over this. And this is what Mr. Jordan's talking about, says, oh my golly, Stan Johnston, you are terrible. Oh my golly, you let my business, you put this on the door. Oh, you're unchristian. That's Mr. Jordan. So he's going crazy about this, because it was even on, it was even on, I think you go to New Life, this is on the door of New Life Church, too.
Let's go.
How about that? And they didn't go woo like Mr. Jordan did. It was on the door of Pastor Joe's church, and he didn't go woo like you did.
Stan, you're not talking about anything.
So, so I'm talking about these, so let's go over some of these. And you have, everybody's been giving a copy of this by email, it doesn't say warning alert, but it's sent to you October the 10th. So you've got that, and Wanda has that. And she didn't go woo when she, when she received it, but Mr. Jordan did. Okay, let's go, let's combine some items. Okay, you want to count them? 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. 8B, 8F, 8G, 8H, 8I, and 8L. They have to do some, with some big problems, and they have to do with the person who just left, and another person who's leaving right now, and that's...
Tell me what the problems are.
Because he doesn't want to hear about it, because he's upset, because he doesn't want to hear from Stan Johnston. Well, he's leaving, and so is, so is...
Nope, he's here, let's go.
So is Mr. Larisse, and that's who I'm talking about, in these particular items, these particular items, they're talking about them, especially the dishonesty of our city. And I don't, I know you don't want to let me hear you say this, but I delivered this also to our mayor. There was a mayor, and right after I delivered to the mayor, I went over to Genesis and I put it on his door. And he didn't go, Diesel didn't go crazy about it. In fact, I said, I said, Mr. Diesel, I was hoping Mr. Larisse would be here, I said, Mr. Diesel, we have a problem.
Is any of these unchrist...
We have a problem with the city of Titusville. We have a problem, we have a city manager who is incredibly dishonest. And do you remember what you said?
I did. I said, you always say that.
No, you said, yes, I know.
No, I didn't say that.
I think so.
I said, you always say that.
I think you said, I know.
I said, that's what you say.
Because I know.
I said, you always say that.
Oh, is that what you said?
That's what I said.
I thought it was different, but that's okay. My hearing wasn't clogged, I got better, my hearing is clogged.
I remember what I said. I said, you always say that, in my courtyard at my house.
That's the first time I've been there.
Yeah, I know.
I always say that, but I've only been there one time. I had a hard time finding your place anyways. I got lost. But anyhow, what's going on is we have incredible dishonesty with our Water Resources Department, and of course, Mr. Stauffer's not listening, because he's talking to Brad. See, it's more important to me, he doesn't want to hear about the complaints I have about Mr. Stauffer, because he's busy.
Here, stop the clock. Now, you're gonna say you don't have time, and I don't care what Mr. Stauffer's doing, and you shouldn't either. You're gonna talk about your topics, don't worry about what anybody else is doing.
All right, I want you to understand...
Start the clock.
Okay, I want you to understand is that Mr. Larisse gets paid 100, over $160,000 a year, and he's incredibly dishonest. And another dishonest person is Mr. Stauffer, and he's not listening to a word he, I'm saying about, about his objects.
Where is that on this consent agenda, because we're about to come to the end of this thing.
I told you all these, I'm missing six of them. Six of them have to do with Mr. Stauffer.
What did you talk about?
They have to do with Mr. Stauffer.
No, there's not, his name's not on here.
Oh, you got to be kidding.
I want you to talk, tell me, go 8 and talk about it.
Okay.
All right, hit the clock.
Let me tell you, okay. 8B has to do with Osprey Nutrient Removal Upgrade Project. Does that have anything to do with Mr. Stauffer? You got, it sure does.
I only want to hear what you think about the project. I want to hear what you think about the project. If you're gonna talk about that, talk about the project.
I think y'all should have stopped the clock with him. What it has to do with the project, well, he's managing, and he's completely dishonest in many things. He's dishonest about, for example, this thing that I just, just gave to you, another handout, in other words, the sewage leaks, sewage spills, Mr. Stauffer is completely dishonest about that. I mean, I reported it to his department, I reported it to all you guys, I put it on City Hall building, this on the building, and I contacted, made a police report, and yet, our city manager says it never happened, and yet, it's still there. The evidence is still there. What I'm saying is that, is that it appears that you're rewarding, you're rewarding Mr. Stauffer and our city manager for being dishonest. You pay him to be dishonest. I don't think that's right.
Stop the clock, stop the clock, stop the clock. Stan?
Yes, sir.
I'm gonna tell you right now, you're gonna need to talk about something on here, you got 22 of them or whatever.
Those are talking about...
You've talked about Mr. Stauffer, you've talked about dishonesty, that's wonderful, that's what you got, that's what you do.
Well, you're not listening.
I mean...
You're not listening very well.
Kind of hurt it. These things are down here, 8, I, J, you put a circle, I haven't heard you say 8 is about this. I'd like to hear you say something about some of these. Start the clock.
I am, I am. In other words, 8B, 8...
No, I don't want to hear anything else about anybody at the table. I don't want to hear about them at all.
Okay, let's talk a little bit about 8L, which is one of those, those 1, 2, 3, 4, those, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, six ones I'm talking about right now. I'm still talking about six of them, and I'm going to even ask for extra time. Eight L has to do with work order. We have given, do you realize, look in your report, and we have already given that consultant over three million dollars. A consultant over three million dollars. And we have given a consultant over three million dollars. We have given a consultant over three million dollars to, to help this guy out, and what does he do? What, one of the things he does is, is when, when we have a, a national news, newsletter say, n- news guardian say, "Hey, you know, we have a, a problem in the city of Titusville." It's reporting to national news of a hundred and seventy-six, of a hundred and seventy-six parts per trillion, a hundred and seventy-six parts per trillion, a hundred and seventy-six part per trillion PFOS. And what do you think he does? It's not even mentioned at council meeting. It was never mentioned. We talked about PFOS, but we never reported about their part. I cannot believe that you do this. You're talking about dishonesty? Wow, 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 wow. And we're talking about the boiled water alert. What do you think about the boiled water alert? This has to do with him. Three million dollars, in other words, what is he? He gave a report on the boiled water alert, and what do you think it was? Nonsense, complete nonsense. It had nothing to do with four log virus. So he gave a second report, and he admitted, because I said, I contacted FDEP and found out the city of Titusville has a deficiency of four log virus. Do you understand? No, you don't. But the thing is, is four log virus.
Calm down, calm down.
I'm sorry. All right, four log virus has to do with, with deficiencies in our water treatment plant, and we could have boiled water alert, and we could have restaurants, again, there was one restaurant suffered over thirty thousand dollars loss because of that boiled water alert, and we never know when it's going to happen, because when we get this type of boiled water alert, guess what? It's too late. It's too late. The pollution is already in the system. Why aren't we go, why, why doesn't he respond and tell us what he's going to do? He said he's going to, to, to tell us, and says it's going to be expensive, and we have, we've already spent three, over three million dollars in our consultants for him, and he hasn't got any answers for us. What is he, does he know what he's doing? I don't think, I don't think so. Do you know what he's doing? I don't think so either. This is city manager, the city manager is dishonest all about, about the sewage spills and everything else, and what does, what do you do, Mayor? What do you do? Nothing. He's completely dishonest, and what do you do? Nothing. I'm talking about these issues on these that I'm, the six items that has to do with the sewer, this, our sewer and water services. It's crazy. Our potable water system and our sewage, sewage spills into the river, and he's, both of these guys are responsible for the false reports.
Time is up.
Okay, I'm asking for extra time.
And I don't see anybody.
Can I have two minutes?
I see no one.
I thought you wanted to hear about this. I really thought you wanted to hear more.
Time is up, thank you.
Thank you.
There are no more cards, correct? Member Nelson.
So I've moved to approve consent agenda. Item's A through, I think it stops at O.
I think it, yes, O.
Eight A to eight O, second.
I have a motion from Member Nelson, a second from Vice Mayor, roll call, vote.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes. Consent agenda passes unanimously. City Manager?
Uh, no, uh, ordinance to a second reading or public hearings, uh, no ordinance as first reading, no old business. We are now on, uh, item twelve A, which is the Brookshire partial replat. Uh, PNC considered this at their last meeting and voted unanimously seven zero to approve this. The Brookshire final plat was approved on ten May, twenty twenty-two, and subsequently recorded. During the review of, of the as-built closeout documents which were received after the final plat recording, staff became aware of a portion of one of the courts was built inconsistent or built consistent with the approved site plan. However, the road was not correctly shown on the original final plat. Therefore, the partial replat is required per Florida statute to show the east jog of the roadway. Attached is the partial replat as well as the recorded final plat that shows the area of the court subject to partial replat. The final plat, replat is consistent with the preliminary plat as required by Chapter thirty-four procedures, Article Three, subdivisions, Division Five, plat, Section thirty-four, one seventy-one definition. Staff recommends approval of the Brookshire subdivision replat as it is consistent with the requirements of Section thirty-four seventeen, requiring conformity to the approved preliminary plat, the, the plating requirements of Chapter one seventy-seven Florida statute and the city's comprehensive plan and land development regulations. Mr. Parrish is here to answer any questions that you may have on this partial replat.
Uh, City Attorney, I understand this is a quasi judicial.
Yes, sir, and I'll read the rules.
Okay, do you want to do that now, or are we going to wait?
I can do it.
Okay, let's do that right now.
During this public hearing portion of the meeting, anyone wishing to speak on the quasi judicial item must first sign a public hearing agenda card and sign the oath contained thereon. These cards are located on the table at the entrance to the chamber. If you have photographs, sketches, or documents that you desire for the city council to consider, they must be submitted into evidence and will be retained by the city. Please submit such exhibits to the city clerk. City clerk, of all persons wishing to speak before the city council sign an oath card swearing to tell the truth, the full truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
For staff and the applicant, um, all witnesses that intend to speak, you must sign an oath card swearing to tell the truth, the full truth, and nothing but the truth. If there's anyone present who has not signed an oath card that wishes to speak on the quasi judicial item, please submit a card at this time. City clerk, of all agenda items been properly advertised.
Yes, sir.
In the event that a council member has received an ex parte communication, either verbal or written, outside of this hearing, the council member shall disclose the identity of the person, group, or entity with whom the communication took place and the subject of the communication, including all opinions or facts discussed. Any written communication must be disclosed and made a part of the record. Also, in the event that a member has conducted an investigation or site visit or received any expert opinions regarding this quasi judicial item, said visit or opinions shall be disclosed.
I have none. I, I
No.
I don't see any lights. I'd say that's a zero. All right, we good, everybody move forward? All right, uh, anybody have any questions for staff?
Mr. Mayor, I just do want to make one correction of what was stated. City Manager read the last paragraph here, but there was a typo. Um, we found that, the staff found that the Brookshire subdivision replat that's presented to you tonight is consistent with requirements of Section thirty-four dash one seventy-one of the code, requiring conformity to the approved preliminary plat and plating requirements of the statutes and of the city's comprehensive plan and land development regulations. So we found it consistent with those requirements. Um, just to point out to you, on page two twenty-four of your packet is the illustration showing the replat. I'll try to answer any questions you have about that.
Okay, I don't, yeah, I'm kind of old-fashioned here. Uh, Member Nelson?
So I was trying to figure this out, where this road was and how it changed. Can you help me out?
Sure.
Okay.
So on page two twenty-four of your packet, you'll see a illustration of the boundaries of what's supposed to be the replat. This is a very large subdivision. There was a deviation that was identified when they showed us the, uh, final inspection. They actually put in the road with a jog in there, and you can see right there, this is what's called, uh, Abbey Court. It goes north-south on the page here. Um, there's a curvature to it, that is supposed to reflect the current, uh, curvature of the road that, as it was constructed. And so that is consistent with, with the site plan, preliminary plat, and so this final, this, uh, replat is to make the overall plat consistent with those prior documents.
I think I'm what you-
You got that or no?
I think. We're hoping.
The, take a look at that road in the middle there, that segment that looks like it's got a curvature to the right.
Yeah.
That's what's being corrected here.
That's what I thought.
So
Yeah.
Yeah, the original final plat that was recorded did not account for that curvature, and so this replat is a correction, basically. It's a, a corrective action. And the reason for that is it can affect people's property boundaries, and so that needs to be accurate when you're selling property.
So we're just going through a correction, making it accurate. All right, um, anything else for staff? Is the applicant here? Is there an applicant? Anything you want to say? All right, uh, cards, please.
We have one card, it's Stan Johnston.
Mr. Mayor, before he gets up, I, I do have a question for, um, staff. Um, I understand procedurally that he has a comeback before us, but why? I mean, something this small, to me, it seems like it's something that staff should be able to do without us coming, it coming back before the council.
Partly because of what the code says and what the statute's saying. You're accepting a plat, you're accepting a road for city maintenance, and it has, should be accurate. And also, this reflects the deviation of, it should reflect the correct size and dimensions of the residential lots that are being sold as well, and that does require your approval and acceptance.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Stan?
Stan Johnston, I'm speaking about, uh, twelve A, uh, partial replat. Unfortunately, I had four items that I didn't get to speak on, uh, on the consent agenda because you didn't give me more time, but I know you wanted to hear about them, and what you could do is we can meet together and discuss them later if you like, okay? So on Brookshire partial replat, I have some questions about what's going on, and I ask myself, is how, how the city of Titusville, uh, uh, let's say evaluates these plats and so forth, because, uh, I'm, I'm, uh, contacting the city, and I have closed doors from the city manager, closed doors from, from a number of departments about, uh, a plat that's going on right now that, that's for SNJ Oaks, and it's, you know, it's, it's a plat, and it's a, it's a preliminary plat, and it, it, it has a, a ten-foot easement on it, and, and yet, the plans call for a twelve-foot wide access easement for, to be in within a ten-foot, a twelve-foot driveway to be in within a ten-foot access easement, which doesn't fit at all. And yet, the city has approved it. So I don't know what the city is doing as far as proceeds, procedurally. Not only that, is the survey for this particular plat disagrees with the surveys of the city Titusville in angular measurement and in meets, both in meets and bounds, and yet, the city approves this survey and the plat regardless of when the city has information, that the city has, their own surveyors did, that disagrees with it. Plus, I have six other surveyors that disagree with this survey of this, of this particular. I'm not saying, in this case, of, of the replat of Brookshire, if I had a problem with that, with Brookshire, I certainly could bring it to your attention this time, I'm questioning how you review Brookshire replat when, in this case, I have a preliminary plat, it's completely nonsense. And for example, when you have a twelve-foot driveway within a ten-foot easement, it just doesn't fit. Not only that, is the city of Titusville has driveway standards that the tw, the twelve-foot driveway, in this case, cannot even fit in a twelve-foot wide easement. It can't even fit in a fourteen-foot wide easement, and I've even gone over with, with staff about it and shown them, because they, they, they've shown me that it doesn't fit. It doesn't fit regulation, code regulations. So in other words, I'm coming to you, and I, I do not have disagreement with Brookshire plat, replat. I don't know for sure, but, but the thing is, is from a reputation-wise, is that, is that Honeycutter and Associates, they're very good. They're very good in the work they do, and so I believe they've done it right. But when you have somebody out of town that comes in and he disagrees with at least six surveyors in the city of Titusville that done their work, and the city does nothing about it, it just, it's kind of, it's, it's, it's unbelievable.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it. Uh, any other cards? All right, uh, applicant, you want to follow up at all? That's, that's the procedure, you know? Okay. Uh, okay, so we need a motion. Uh, Vice Mayor?
Mr. Mayor, Council, I move that we approved, uh, twelve A, Brookshire replat.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor, a second from Member Nelson, roll call, vote.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Passes unanimously, thank you very much, appreciate you being here. Uh, City Manager?
Onto, uh, item twelve B, Titusville Environmental Commission recommendation to replace the landscape technical manual tree list. At the ten August twenty twenty-two regular Titusville Environmental Commission meeting, the commission recommended to city council to replace the current tree list with the city's technical manual with the, uh, native keystone species to grow in, in Brevard County list provided by the UFIFAS Brevard Extension. The native keystone spec, species list is attached. At the fifteen September twenty twenty-two meeting, the regular TEC meeting, the commission amended the motion to include sable palmetto in addition to native keystone spec, species list. The motion also recommended that any occurrence of nuisance tree be replaced with a prohibited tree. And staff is recommending you consider the recommendation and provide direction on replacing the current tree list with the city's technical, in the city's technical manual with the University of Florida IFAS, uh, native keystone spec, uh, species list. And Mr. Parrish is available to answer any questions that you may have.
Mr. Parrish, anything you want to start off with?
No, sir, I'll just answer, answer any questions you have. Also, Rachel Mueller is here to answer any questions.
All right, uh, Member Nelson?
So this is my suggestion. I looked at the, uh, University of Florida list, sort of compared it to the list we had, and there are a lot of trees that were on both lists, uh, and a lot of plants were on both lists. I don't know how long it's been since we've looked at our tree list, our list of, of native plants, but I think it would be worth relooking at it, because I know it's been at least six years that I can recall. My guess is it's probably been ten, fifteen years, but that we will look at our list and compare it to the list from the University of Florida, and maybe work up a new list where we are looking at more Florida na, more Florida native plants, plants and trees.
I would say I pretty much had the same thing to say, um, looking over the list, there were some similarities and certainly some differences, and I don't know how long it's been since we've updated ours. Um, I kind of looked more at, at, at just meet, um, amend, update. Um, certainly, I think that there's some improvements and some more native plants and that sort of thing that can be put on there. I don't think it's necessarily a scrap, this one goes away and this one comes on. In my mind, I think that you get together and say, hey, this one's already there, this one's there, let's add this, this, and this. I think that we can, we can work a little bit more together on that than just saying one comes, one goes, but definitely, it looks like some changes and some, uh, additions and deletions maybe. So I kind of agree with what you're saying. Anybody else over there want to make any comments before we go to cards? The answer looks like yes. Uh, Member Robinson?
Yeah, if, if we do this, Brad, if we, um, go with the recommendation, how does the change from our current list affect developers and builders that are coming in for trees and, and, and Titusville? How, what do you know of any effect that, that we make certain things mandatory, uh, with the, the new development coming in?
So our code, if you look at the current code tree table, it divides it up into three types of trees, for example, and that's consistent with other parts of our code about what is an overstorey tree and what is an understory tree and, and so on. This table that is presented here to replace it doesn't really divide the trees up or species up in that way, so we're going to have to do some kind of evaluation. For example, if we decide to replace our tree table with what the TEC is recommending, evaluate which trees really fall under these categories, because that then fits in with the rest of our code.
That's, that's what I thought, and then that's what I'm, that's where I stand, that we need to see what
Communicate.
The good and the bad and the indifferent.
That's exactly, I, I agree. All right, anybody else up here? Uh, call the cards.
First card is Tony Shifflow.
Shifflow, Tropic Street. Um, I'm here just once again to, uh, reiterate and reinforce the TEC recommendations. You guys, your agenda's war and peace, you know? The novel length, I'm talking about the length of your agenda, so many hundreds of pages. Um, TEC has a big agenda also, but they are really willing and able to do the research for you and to help the staff along with deciding the under, the over, and I just would like for you to put it in their ballg, you know, put it in their ballpark and let them come back to you and advise you. Direct them, because they, they follow directions. Thank you.
Thank you. Direct them, they follow directions. Next guard, please.
Kathleen Perez.
Got to be an athlete to get out there.
Yeah. Kate Perez, thirty twenty-two, uh, thirty twenty-five, South Washington Avenue. Um, I'm not, I don't understand why you wouldn't take this recommendation, um, because, you know, uh, we've talked before in the past about the whole plastic plant gate. Because, you know, we've talked before in the past about the whole plastic plant gate, right? And I was the one who said, well, did you use native plants? And they said, well, we don't know what, we don't know. If you keep allowing people to use non-natives, then they're likely to die, they're likely to bring diseases, as with the lethal bronzing that we've discussed with some of these chosen on our list, palm trees. They'll make other trees diseased here. If you choose the native keystone species, you're choosing the proper tree for the proper place, something that'll survive, something that is, will feed our insects, pollinators, birds. There's no downside to it, except if you want to keep allowing developers to remove live oaks that are huge and replace them with teeny little palm trees, which many of those are not trees, they're grass, they're not trees. So they don't serve the purpose of tree, might call it tree, but they're not all trees, many of them are not. Okay? So I don't know why you wouldn't take their advice. And we talked about earlier, right, we want to be a tree town. Well, this is the way to do it.
Member, oh boy, Member Stokel.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, I think, and I don't want to speak further so the council, I think that's the direction we're going, is we want to give it to staff for advisability to look at that. And what I would imagine is it would, they'll come back with their recommendation, which would then potentially go to TEC to say, you guys think that this is good. So I think we are definitely.
You're on your way to that.
Correct.
But you could vote on it tonight, correct?
Correct, but I, for me personally, I always like to go by staff. They might know legislation, laws, certain things, so I always like to go through there.
I mean, that's a point, but the TEC are the scientists, they understand what you guys don't.
Which is why I want both, which is, yeah, so we are moving there.
Okay.
Yeah, again, I think that when, I think all three of us spoke, it was like, there's a lot of good stuff there, let's talk to them and get this together and move in that direction. Certainly, native is kind of the key word.
And keystone, which is like, you build all the other environments around it.
And I learned, I'm learning, but I learned, I'm surprised to hear that a palm tree is not a tree.
Oh, really?
So I've learned.
Many of them are not.
Some people call them a fern, they're kind of a fern.
It's a piece of grass, it's a tall piece of grass, so.
Big old piece of grass.
It really is. I mean, not every single one, obviously cabbage palms are trees, but because many of them are grass, they don't have the proper roots, they don't, you know, they're just not, they don't serve the purpose of a real tree.
Hold up just in case, I don't know, it keeps going off. Member Nelson.
So part of the reason for giving it to, giving it to staff, I have a voice anyway tonight, part of the reason for giving it to staff is they are classified in categories. So you have to have X amount of this, Y for over here, Z for over there. So we do have our berets on the staff, and they can make it into a form that will go into our code. Does that make sense?
Yes.
You just don't take something and go.
Yeah, just need some communication to move that direction.
You need to have something that's.
Compromise.
Right. They're appropriate format.
Okay, thank you.
And wait, there might be one more, I'm not sure. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, actually, I was trying to understand exactly what was going on here because I thought you were saying something different than Ms. Shifflow was saying, but apparently you all were saying the same thing. But my assumption was that the TEC suggested certain pages in there. And what I believe council is saying, let's look at this whole thing. And not only these pages, it may be other things that we may want to add to it. So I think it's a win-win for everyone if we look at it that way. But I would assume that it's going to go back to TEC once you bring the group together and then decide from there, and then it comes back.
Right, and I appreciate that. It's just that because it is here and you could have voted on it, I wanted to.
But even at that, and what has to be done is there's got to be the division, right, the different, yes, the three things at least, so there's got to be some communication with staff and then with TEC, what goes where.
Understand.
Okay. All right, thank you, I don't see any more. Next card.
Laura Lee Thompson.
Laura Lee, what if we went real fast and we were done when you got here? What if we went real fast?
I was watching you on TV. While I was working on.
I wonder how you're so good at that.
Laura Lee Thompson, 3550 Irwin Avenue, MEMS. And I'm the Chair of the Titusville Environmental Commission. The first thing I want to do is, is to thank Rachel for the outstanding job that she did with her sustainability report tonight. Our city is really fortunate to have her. I mean, a lot of the other cities have sustainability directors, but we have the prettiest one, absolutely, and the smartest one. So, yeah, but, so LID, it's all about holding rainwater that falls on the property in place so that that property, or so that it can percolate into the ground and replenish the aquifer rather than channeling it to a pipe or a ditch to dump it in the river. And the importance of keeping trees in the landscape was stressed over and over and over again at the LID conference that I attended last week, because trees are incredible consumers of stormwater. So we're the gateway to the, one of the nation's most visited wildlife refuges, we have 100 square miles of lands in public ownership on the west side of our community because of the St. John's River floodplain, we have lots of trees, and we're the only city in Brevard County that has a tree canopy protection ordinance. Titusville residents enjoy birds and wildlife in our yards that Brevardians to the south, they simply don't get because their landscape is so developed. So our environmental commission wants to ensure that Titusville continues to be home to the wealth of wildlife that's found here. And with all the new growth that's taken place, it's important that we maintain the habitats that are being lost in the development process by planting what's being torn up back into the ground. And so, you know, to make it fast, we recommended that you adopt Sally Scolera's list that she specifically and carefully did a lot of work on to recommend things that would grow in Titusville. And we like that. But it's a messy-looking document, and it's long, and there's redundancy, some plants are in there multiple times. So I agree, we need to take that list and take the existing list that's in the technical manual and take the best of both and come up with something that will be uniquely Titusville. And if we do that, then once again, Titusville is going to be, it'll be another case where Titusville is the first city in Brevard County to do something great and spectacular. So I think it's good, I was really encouraged to hear you guys talking tonight. So one more thing, while I was looking at our existing tree list, I noticed that wild date palms, they're still included. I thought we voted to remove them. So if you want to see what lethal bronzing disease really looks like, go look at the palm trees that are by the traffic light at Grissom Parkway and State Road 405. They are dead from lethal bronzing disease, I'm seeing it in other palm trees around the city. We don't want to get that started here.
I agree.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other cards?
Two more.
Two more.
Stan Johnston.
Can I come up? Yeah.
I'm speaking differently on this, is this quasi judicial? This is not quasi judicial, well, the last one was quasi judicial. In other words, I had, if I, if I said something that was false or something like that, or if you guys said something false in response, it's like perjury, understand? Perjury. So in other words, when I say you guys, for example, he was dishonest and you say, no, it wasn't dishonest, perjury. Okay. So anyhow, I'm here for a different reason than I usually am when I'm speaking. I'm usually speaking because, because why? Because I'm closed doors. In other words, when I go to the city manager's office and go other places, like fire department on this S and J Oaks, closed doors. Knock, 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 no answer. That's what's happening in city Titusville. But in this particular case, or in this particular item, it's, I say this is open doors. And this type of closed-door policy is which Mr. Jordan should pay special attention to. He should pay, yep, 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 he's crazy. He's crazy. And so is Mr. Larice. So anyhow, I am certainly not against this, and I've been to some TEC meetings, they had this, and this refers to Mr. Larice too, you know. Okay? Thank you, thank you. And so I am for what they're doing here, and Rachel has been doing a wonderful job with the TEC, and I'm so happy that she's here for sustainability. Did she do a good job on that report?
Yes, we said.
She sure did. She sure did. So, and she's helping the TEC about 12B and 12C, and she's doing a good job. So thank you.
Thank you. Next card.
Last card is Joe Hill.
Joe Hill, Brandy Avenue, Titusville. I would like to say great job to the east, for the TEC to make a recommendation like this. I had been recommending that we go to Florida native plants for years. Native plants don't require water, they go through the freezes and the droughts without a problem, they're resistant to bug infestation and other diseases. But it says here, and from the discussion, it doesn't sound like you're really going to do this, but it says here you're going to replace the current list with this one from University of Florida. And I've tried to do a little research, and I have looked at the list from University of Florida, and it's a very extensive list, and I don't know if it's the same one, I'll leave this here, you can compare it. But one thing I notice, this list has a lot of plants on, why not do get very good here? But there's a little mark on here that tells you what temper zone these plants will work, will grow in. And this is through the whole state, this is not just, this was based on South Florida, but they do have the temper zones on here. We're in a very unique situation here in Titusville because we have two temper zones in Brevard County, and it splits right about, I think just a little south of Titusville. So you've got plants that grow very good down in Merritt Island that don't do too good here, and we got plants here that do great, but they don't do too good down there. So it's a little more complicated than that. I was a native plant broker, Florida native plant broker for years, so I went to a lot of the nurseries and I did a lot of research on the plants. And we really have just a few plants that really excel here, without worrying about water or these cold snaps that come through and things like that. So I think it's a good plan, but I wouldn't just wholesale replace it with this list unless you go through and.
Okay, thank you. I think he's done, I'm not sure. Okay, thank you very much. Member Nelson.
I'm going to say Sally, I can't remember Sally's last name.
Scolera.
What is it?
Scolera.
Scolera. I've met her before, I've talked to her before, great resource, she's our extensionation. And if she's gone through that list, I'm sure she's gone through it pretty carefully. So I would trust her.
And I'm not as familiar with her as you are, but looking at the list, it looks to me like there's been some research and some understanding. And again, I'm not even sure I understood that something that grows here won't grow in Merritt Island or vice versa. So there's, there's a lot out there. Next card. All right, so basically, we are to give a recommendation, and I think what I'm hearing is, don't scrap, but let's get them together, the staff get with the TEC and grab hold of their list, and you're going to have to divide some things into three segments, et cetera, et cetera. But let me hear, counsel, what do you want to say and how you want to word that, or how you're going to go?
Well, we need to, or, I mean, if our idea is to give direction to Brad, do you need us to do it in form of motion, or is this?
It would help us to know what the direction of the council is.
Okay. So then basically, we'd say, move to have you guys consider adding or looking at the current tree lists, but you want to include other things other than trees, a whole list of vegetation.
It's the landscaping technical manual, tree list.
Landscape technical manual. And look at the list from TEC.
University of Florida.
And the University of Florida, as Sally Scolera has set out, and make recommendations as to what should be in the landscape manual.
And of course, you have to divide it into the three segments, et cetera, the different areas, that's a real factor. And I'm not sure how you do that.
My understanding of the motion is to take the list that is presented by, recommended by TEC to be replacing our tree table, and instead incorporate what we would recommend into our current tree table.
Incorporate their list.
And then if there are things that we need to delete, go ahead and delete them.
And I hear from out there, there are some that are redundant.
Yep.
And we can, you know, just kind of make it more precise.
That's clear to us.
Second with discussion, just want to clarify.
All right, I guess I have a motion, and I don't even know how to say her whole motion, but I have a motion from Member Nelson, a second from Member Stokel, we have discussion.
Yeah, my big concern is when you're looking, removing any plants that are prone to diseases or things that were mentioned by TEC, I don't know what those are, but I would hope that staff could investigate those because I wouldn't want those on there. That's my concern.
Yeah, I think you mentioned about, I think a dayed palm is what you call it, whatever the palm, yeah, I think we did talk about that previously.
I thought we removed.
Just so you know, that was, that was an ordinance, it was approved, it just didn't show up immunity code because there is a couple months, three months lag time before they updated, but it was effective.
Okay, very good. Are you up still? Okay, okay, so I have a motion, I have the second, and I say roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Jordan.
Yes.
Member Stokel.
Yes.
Member Robinson.
Yes.
Member Nelson.
Yes.
Mayor Diesel.
Yes. Think that can be very productive, think we can get rid of some plants on there that are maybe outdated and we know don't need, and add some that are more native. I think that'll be good stuff. City Manager.
Onto item 12C, which is TEC's recommendation to establish a stormwater monitoring program. The Titusville Environmental Commission recommends that the city pursue a request proposal to establish a stormwater monitoring program. The program should be open to consultants and the university graduate programs and should be funded with $50,000. On 25 January 2022, city council approved the award of a work order to Geoscentech Consultants Incorporated to provide engineering services associated with the preparation of a stormwater capital projects master plan. The project will include a thorough inventory of stormwater management, drainage features, and structures, and identification of flooding, water quality problem areas, as well as areas that could be impacted by future changes in climate variables, such as sea level rise and changes in rainfall density. The work order for the first phase will include water quality assessment and a CIP plan to guide the city's water quality projects for the next 10 years. Its staff's recommendation not to move forward with the additional water quality monitoring until the master plan can be completed and to revisit the request if the consultant recommends any additional water quality monitoring. Staff also believes $50,000 is not enough to accomplish this. If in fact you would move forward with this proposal, staff would have to cancel currently budgeted project or equipment. If council considers this a multi-year project, we would have to look at stormwater rates.
Member Stokel.
Yes, do we know specifically what they're wanting tested? So we know that stormwater, obviously, probably contain, it's stormwater, so I'm not sure what are they wanting to look for, I guess, in the water or check on? Do we know? I didn't see it in here, so I wasn't sure if there maybe was discussion at their meeting.
So we're looking at the motion that's specifically made, it's on to page 279 of your packet.
Okay. To my knowledge, as the staff liaison to the TEC, the testing is for any nutrients and pollutants that go into the Indian River Lagoon specifically from stormwater runoff. Primarily, those are phosphorus and nitrogen, but there are other pollutants that the, that the stormwater monitoring program is, they are desired to look at. I'm not an expert.
Okay, okay, no, no.
I'm not an expert in knowing what those specifically are, but it's in addition to just phosphorus and nitrogen.
Okay, and then I guess that leads into my second question, which is, is what they're looking to get, to track or measure already being tracked and measured by the other entities that do testing in the, in the waters? Or, I guess they don't really look at our stormwater, but they're testing in the lagoon, so they're wanting to take it another level into our stormwater ponds? Is that what?
So based on understanding of what was presented, the motion that was made, and if you, we provided a report to you of our analysis of what was presented and what is being done now, and that's on page 177 of your packet, it's a two-page report there, and we concluded that the, the water quality monitoring that's being conducted by several entities right now and has been reported and incorporated into the BMAP, which is our monitoring tool right now, suffices those requirements, it's the tool that we use right now. So I guess I have to leave, ask the TEC members to maybe explain the specifics of what they were asking for, maybe that was above and beyond.
Okay, but it sounds like with the Geoscentech, like we are monitoring and doing certain testing currently.
This is a study to tell us where we need to possibly test in the next 10 years.
Okay, and are they looking at all the stormwater ponds? Do we know?
No, it's like ponds, they're going to look at the outfalls and prioritize order quality at least 20 projects over the next decade.
Okay.
What's happened with the BMAP is we've addressed all of the low-hanging fruit and then some. So we're at the point that we have to ask the consultant to go find us more. So they're going to take the same, the same consultant that built the SWIL model, which is what the BMAP is built on, that loads pollution on the properties, applies it to stormwater, and they're going to use the same consultant to bring forward 20 additional water quality plans at a minimum. In addition to flooding and some other things, they're going to build a CIP plan for the next decade of water quality needs. So we can use that to go to SOARL, we can go to NEP, so forth, to apply for grants and give us another menu of projects. But there, at this point, they haven't said they needed more water quality monitoring to complete that. The BMAP is built on a large network, and we included in here what the BMAP testing network is, there are Kilroy's deployed all over the lagoon that are testing a number of variables every day. So.
Okay. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I was trying to understand exactly where we're going here because our first look, you would think, okay, that sounds like a good idea, but then. you would think, okay, that sounds like a good idea. But then you think about it, since we already have a lot of monitoring going on, and the fact that it looks like it's just gonna be a study, then the next step is gonna be, okay, what are you gonna do with the data that you have? Who are you gonna give it to? And then if we find something that's unacceptable based on something, then how are you gonna pay for it? And like, of course, my challenge is when I start hearing that now you're gonna have to raise the costs for those who are using the sewer system to do this thing, then we got a problem with that. $50,000 isn't a lot of money. I just don't see where $50,000 is gonna do anything for us to promote where we're trying to go. We all want clean water in Indian River Lagoon. My question always has to be, if we spend this $50,000, is it gonna be beneficial to our end goal? And I'm not sure it is, especially with everything else that's going on. Do we need this additional study, if you will? I've always had a problem with, with studies or our consultants, if you will, because they, they basically don't tell you things that's gonna cost you more money after the study is done, which sometimes costs you more money with them to say, okay, the next step is gonna be this. So I, I'm a little conflicted with this because I kind of understand what T E C wants to do, but I don't understand what it's gonna actually end up doing for us as a beneficial thing, except have a document to say this is what we found in some of the areas.
Okay. Anybody else? Staff, anything you want to add before I go to cards?
No, sir.
Okay. Call the cards, please.
Tony Shifalo.
Shifalo, Tropic Street. I tend to want to disagree with the Vice Mayor a little bit about the testing. We aren't testing sufficiently to know what is really going into the river, and therefore, we can't tell what it is and where it's coming from. I think that the T E C is heading, I gotta admit, I'm way over, way underwater on this one, because I don't really understand it either. But I know that from the citizen scientists who have been testing the outflows and what's been going into the river, they're finding that they're finding things that aren't being tested by the city on a regular basis. And I think what we're asking T E C to do is to look into a way to start measuring what actually is going into the river. Therefore, then we can look at ways to stop it at the source. I think that's, I think that's where they're going with that. And I think that, I don't know about the finances of it, and I, I have no idea. $50,000 sounds like a lot of money to me. But I think it's imperative at this point in the river's lagoon, I can't think of it as a river, it doesn't flow. The lagoon's future, the present is telling us it's not right. We need to do something. And I think we need to find out what's really going on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shifalo. Next card.
Kathleen Perez.
Kate Perez, 3025 South Washington Avenue, Titusville. This is disturbing to me. I've seen, I've been going to these meetings for more than three years now. And I've seen a pattern of we're very resistant to testing of the water. And at the same time, we have a, Titusville has a reputation as being a city that dumps a lot of sewage into the Indian River Lagoon. I'm sure you guys have seen the stuff I've seen, articles in Orlando Sentinel and Florida Today saying Titusville seems to have a continual dumping problem. Of all the cities in Brevard, they seem to be the one who dumps the most, right? Because I've read those articles. And that video that Dwight tried to show you, but it wasn't allowed, but I actually put that video up online. And the guy doing it is a river guide. And he says, good old Titusville, like, of course, it's Titusville. That's not the reputation we want to have. And this idea, oh, it's gonna cost so much money. I've heard that many times, too. How much money do we give the North Brevard Economic Development Zone every year? A lot of taxpayer money, right? And we don't really have a problem anymore attracting developers. That money could be spent, better spent safeguarding our citizens from that gross water, right? Testing and figuring out ways. And yes, studies. I don't hate studies. I guess we've heard some people here don't like studies. Well, I like studies because you can't learn anything if you don't study. You have to have some scientists look at the problem in a scientific way and study it. It shouldn't be up to politicians or anybody else but scientists to decide if what we're doing is sustainable, if it's healthy for our people and our environment, of course, we need to study it. And I'm gonna refer to one more article I'm sure some of you saw very recently about the huge uptick in dangerous microbial infections in Florida because of the stormwaters of Ian, right? This isn't what we want here. And it's not going to be, make Titusville attractive to people in the future if we continue to let this go on. We need our water tested. And I know so many citizens have asked you to test the water. I'm just one to me dropping the bucket, if you'll excuse the pun. So please, let the T E C recommend some ways to test our water because the citizens want it and we deserve to be safe.
Hold up one second. This will help clarify this for me. When I see the analysis on page 277, it says currently water quality monitoring in Indian River Lagoon is conducted by the St. John's River Water Management District, Florida Department of Environmental Protection, Ocean Research and Conservation Association, Harbor Branch, U S Geological Survey, among others. This status collected and sent to the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. I'm really asking, because if we, if, we can't say the water's not tested, but I think members, back to Member Stokoe's question, clearly the T E C is wanting something else tested.
Right.
Help me with that. What is it they want tested?
Well, I'm not in the T E C. I'm not gonna speak for them. Actually, you should be asking Lauralee this question.
I'll be here in a minute, I'm sure.
Yeah, she knows the answer.
All right. Thank you. But I, again, it was kind of, that's okay. You can sit down. It was kind of coming across that we want the water tested. And I'm, and I'm just reading the report because I'm not in the T E C, and I'm not that person. And I'm learning all the time. But there's at least seven different groups here that sound like they're testing the water. So the T E C must be saying something different. And I'm sure I'm gonna hear that any second now. Next card?
Lauralee.
There you go. On cue.
I didn't have time to get a big one made. People in the audience will have to imagine.
Me too. No, I don't have to imagine.
You don't have to imagine.
Lauralee Thompson, 3550 Urban Avenue, MEMS. Stormwater is the biggest source of pollution to the Indian River Lagoon. I can say it again, but it would waste time. The, all of these agencies that are testing the water, they're using Kilroy's. Kilroy's are out in the middle of the lagoon, and they're like 20 or 30 miles apart. So you have this, this thing that's out in the middle of the lagoon that tests for chlorophyll and dissolved oxygen and all the things that they test for. What the T E C is asking for, and what we've been asking for, and what we will continue to ask for, is monitoring what is coming out of our stormwater ponds and our ditches and, and what's going into the Indian River Lagoon. The seven agencies that you just named do not test for stormwater at its source where it's going into the lagoon. And, and, and so I was really happy to see that you guys are moving forward with an updated stormwater master plan and that you hired a consultant. But I wasn't happy to see staff's recommendation to not move forward with additional water quality monitoring until the master plan is completed. What do they mean when they say not to move forward with additional water quality monitoring? We have no water quality monitoring to begin with. So how can they call it additional water quality monitoring? How can a consultant prepare a stormwater capital improvement project master plan if they don't know what's coming out of our stormwater outfalls? They can't possibly figure it out. So that picture that I gave you, that, that was taken last month on the west shore of Mosquito Lagoon. And that picture shows seagrass recovery that's beyond the belief of the seagrass scientists. What's the difference between here and there? Because we actually had clearer water here last summer than we had in Mosquito Lagoon. The difference is there's no stormwater ponds or ditches or wastewater treatment facilities dumping pollutants into the southern Mosquito Lagoon. That shows how, that picture shows how quickly this damaged system could recover if we would just stop putting nitrogen and phosphorus into it. So you appointed knowledgeable people to serve on your environmental commission to study issues and make recommendations. We agree with the state's Blue Green Algae Task Force that stormwater outfalls should be monitored so that we can know exactly what we're putting into the river. I encourage you to take my picture home with you. Tape it to your refrigerator door so you can see it often. We used to have seagrass like that in the Indian River. And we got to understand what we're putting into the river in order to figure out how to fix it and stop it. Please listen to your own environmental commission and start monitoring the stuff we're dumping into the river. Thank you.
Next card.
The last card is Dan Johnston.
Dan Johnston. I know you want to hear me. But I must apologize, first of all, is that, for the last 10 days, I've had a serious ear infection. I've gone to urgent care twice. And so I've been speaking louder because I can't hardly hear what you're saying. I need myself. So I wonder, Jackson understands that, too. I just, just can't hear very well. So it'll come back, though, and I'll lower my voice. Okay. I'm speaking on 12C for a number of reasons. Is that I believe what we're having, we're having a problem of spending a lot of money. Whoops. We're having a lot of, appears to me, wasted money. And that's from my standpoint as a professional engineer. Let me give you an example. Is that the Sandpoint Park, we have these retention ponds and so forth that we built. And I saw a study that said, I think it was 36 acres going into, through that system. I don't think it's right. I think it's wrong. I think it's only about 30 acres. But when you spend the kind of money that the city is spending on cleaning up the water for, let's say, 30 or 36 acres, you're out of your mind. You're completely out of your mind. I want you to check it. Completely out of your mind. So what I believe this can do, this program that, that T E C is promoting, is that it might say something as, hey, we're wasting millions of dollars where we shouldn't be spending them. They may be able to say absolutely for certainty, we're wasting money. And it'll probably say also, it'll say is that, is that Mr. Larissa is very dishonest because we have even Woody Rice saying, three days sewage was spilled out of that South Lake lift station. It went over the, it went over the street. Well, I say into the, it went over the lift station. And I talked to Alex Chamberlain, who lived next door there for years, and he said, I never seen it happen that way. We've had all kinds of sewage spills all the time over there at South, at South Street, but we never had one like that. Fact is, the guy who lives next door there said it was for five days. And the, the city of Titusville said it was only just a few hours. Anyhow, this, this study may, may wake up some, wake up some things that we're not aware of. I mean, right now, as we have this referendum and so forth, they're spending millions and millions and millions of dollars on cleaning up the river. And usually, it's just improving the infrastructure instead of cleaning up the river. We've got problems, and they're not well understood. But I'm, but I'm saying this from my tech, may I have another minute?
Say your last.
Probably, I probably can't have another minute.
Say your last sentence.
Okay. But, but just what I said in the beginning is, is that we've got money that's not spent appropriately. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any other cards?
No, sir.
Member Robinson.
Yeah, yes. I just, I have a couple of questions in Dennis' statement. First off, how many, do we know how many cities along the Indian River? How many cities are monitoring their stormwater?
That wouldn't be my answer.
Do we have any idea?
I could, I'd have to check their contracts, but I don't know any off the top of my head that have a dedicated.
Nobody is.
Not, not that I'm aware of. I'd have to check.
Not, not, not a, not a bad, but is it, the, the issue with what's going on, I understand all of the monitoring out in the middle of the, that's far away, so to speak, as we've been told. And it, it is monitoring the condition of the water in which, in the area is monitoring. But is it, are we concerned about the question being asked, do we really want to know what we're putting in the river, in the river lagoon? Somebody ever asked that question? Do we really want to know? Or do we want to keep it a secret?
Secret.
I mean, I'm just, I'm just asking the question. Because at some point, we're going to, you know, the question's gonna be asked, why don't we want to know? Why don't, why don't we want to know? I'm not saying that we should do this, but do we want, but I do know that the stormwater ponds are there to catch the water and to treat the water. And I understand that. And that's, that's a wonderful thing. That's a good thing. But what happens after that seems to be some indicators that it may be causing some problems. And if it is causing, wouldn't we want to know that so that we can move beyond this particular story? Because we, we have, we've gotten here, and we've been here for years. Isn't it time for us to just get beyond this? And I'll read, and I have, but I know that once this is done, someone else, something else is gonna be, come up with $50,000 to, to look at that. And I don't know. I, I am really concerned with the question, do we really want to know what we're putting into the lagoon? And right now, the indicators, to my naive knowledge, is that it doesn't seem like we, we're doing a good job. We're doing the best that we can. But do we really want to know what's going into the lagoon? We just want to keep blind folders on? That, that's, that's my question. And, and it's, I'm not going, saying that I'm going with their recommendation, but I do really need an answer to that question. Do we really want to know? Are we just sitting, just saying, okay, wait to, wait to something? What, what, what are we waiting for? So my, my thoughts is, is that if I can get an answer to the question, how many cities down the, the lagoon are testing their stormwater, that would be good. And if all of the cities down south or south of here have the same particular state of mind, you know, I don't really want to know what's going on? That, that could be a question. I mean, does, if I can answer that one, I can give you some more solid feedback on what we should do with this.
Kevin, you got a response?
Sure. The, the B M A was developed by the D E P. So what they did was determine that the Indian River Lagoon is impaired, which means the water needs to be cleaned up. The basin management plan was developed by their PhDs and all the research scientists that came forward and said, it's a nitrogen and phosphorus problem. They gave the city a loaded allocation. They gave the state, they gave the county, everybody got loaded allocations they have to address. What they identified was is a nitrogen phosphorus concern. So they gave us a three-decade period to address it. They extended that to 2036 last year because the project load is so heavy to get this allocation done, is take, they felt there needs to be extra years. Part of that was they developed what's called the SWIL model, which is a spatial analysis model. It takes the land and cuts it up in little pieces. It said, this piece of land develops. It takes the land and cuts it up in little pieces, and said, this piece of land develops, this must nitrogen phosphorus because of its land use. We got that SWIL model, we take that model and load every basin in the city. So we do know how much nitrogen phosphorus is coming out of each outfall by this model that's been accepted by the state. Is it perfect? No, because every rain event in a stormwater pond is going to be different. It's going to depend on if the people upstream use fertilizer, if they wash their car, if anything runs off a yard, it lands in our stormwater system. So every time we sample, you're going to get a different story out of that one pipe. It may be the same pipe, depending on the time of year, it will come out differently, depending on how intense the rain is. So we've used sampling in the past to prove that a baffle box is efficient. We test above and below a baffle box to say, we know what comes in one side, the filters clean it, what goes out the other side. So now we can apply that 80% filtration and say, if it's loaded 1,000 pounds of nitrogen, we just took out 800 of it over a year. So we do have that type of modeling we've done in the past. It's called verification modeling. We put a design system in place, the Senior Center is another one. We built two wet pond detention, we said, we load it on one end, then a model says it should do this, we run it through the system, did it do it? Dre Field. And we have to prove to DEP every year, we turn our report, DEP says, we did these projects, here's our SWIL model, said we developed 1,800 tons of, pounds of nitrogen. By what we found, we took out 600. And they agree or disagree with this, and they credit us that, and there's a report released every year on the BMAP that says, you know, City Tyusville load reduction is this. So north area, north part of the lagoon, which we share with the county and Cocoa, we have a loading, we have loading in two different areas. And that's what our BMAP and our water quality goals have been addressing, is take that modeling system, take the efficiencies we know, SOAR helps us by saying certain constructed items have this efficiency. That efficiency was found through other people studying it, but we can apply that because it, they should be consistent. And we know that we've reduced, you know, 12 of our 18 basins have some sort of protection. Smaller ones were put off, we're doing more studies of bringing other in, other things. The council knows, we put in three baffle boxes in our big, large basins already, in a lot of cases, two more on the way. So, so yeah, we, we get that from all that data that was developed during the BMAP, and they, they check it every year. The NEP meets, National Estuary Program, the DEP, they have, they get together every year for an annual update. And what they say at times is they've changed the SWIL model, they've changed and said, we only worry about loading during the rainy season, we don't worry about it during the dry season any longer. They, they changed that, and we try to address that parameter change, still at the end goal being, if we're, if our goal's 30,000 pounds, we, we develop a project plan to get that goal in a timeframe, like I said, got extended 2036, but it's still a, that's our moving target goal. Now, if you look at the SOAR website, it's tracked for the whole basin together now that we're, all the communities and the county, state and all are trying to track together to meet that goal for the Basin Management Action Plan. I would expect that if there's a change in a parameter, DEP will come forward and say, hey, now we're concerned with suspended solids, TSS, you can test in water. A lot of our improvements, they take that out too. You know, most of them are advertised and built for nitrogen phosphorus because that's, that was the goal for this area. But a lot of them have the ability to remove other pollutants that are going through the system. So I will say that, just, just to let you know, when we did verification testing of four of our outfalls, it cost us $100,000. That got us 10 samples per outfall. So to do all 18 and do a good amount, which means putting a data logger at each of them, will be a substantially higher cost than 50,000, in, in our opinion. Because we know what it costs us before, we know what it costs us to just do grab samples around Sandpoint Park and things we've done. So we, we do think that if we were to do a real testing program, we'd want to hit every outfall at the same time in a rain event, it would be a much more costly endeavor.
Well, well, thank you. Now I know that you care. Now I know that you care, and that's what was important to me. Because yes, you're, you're taking some of it out, but you're not getting all of it, and you admit it to that. And we are in hope that somewhere down the road, things, that's going to continue to improve as we go along. And with, with, with that information in the, in the front of me, because if we test again, if we test, we already know the issue, we know the problem, we know we're doing our best, we know we're getting 600 pounds out of it, whatever you explained to me, we're taking some of it out by the methods that we are using. And until our methods improve, the, the amount we're taking out is not going to improve until they come up with better methods. And you're telling me that we're doing the best with the dollars that we have, with the resources that we have, to, to combat the issue at the level that we're able to combat it at this present time on this day? That's what I heard you say.
Yes, so we, we commit, if you look at our budget, we commit a large amount of our funds to water quality. So we brought everything, and we take every technology advancement we can. You know, we put in for grants this time on a new type of box that doesn't use the same screening, but uses more mulch filtration. You'll see tree boxes coming up if we're granted a SOAR grant downtown. So we're taking advantage of as many technology advances we can get. I can tell you that Sandra Reller, our deputy director, she spent, she, this is what she does, she was in our stormwater department first, so she, she takes the lead on this. But yes, we, we put, and that's probably the reason why we hired Geoscientec, was we are at the point, we needed help with finding these projects every year, so we wanted them to develop a robust 10-year cycle plan to give us 20-plus projects that we can put on the table for all our granting agencies, and leverage the stormwater funds against grants, against SOAR, against the state, to put together the, the next step to finish our, our allocation. I don't expect the water quality projects will ever stop once allocations are done, I think they'll continue to progress as improvements make, are made in technology. But, but yes, yes, sir. We're, we are, we're trying to work the problem through the plan that's on, on the board in front of us with the funds we're allocated.
So further, we already know what's going in, where, where the resource, the financial resources need to be put, is in coming up with new technology to help us do better in keeping those contaminants out. And with that, I'll, I know what I will say on this recommendation, and my, with that information that he just gave me, my recommendation would say, let's save our $50,000 until technology gets better.
Member Stokoe.
Yeah. I, this is a complicated topic for me because I'm not, this is not my area of expertise at all. I think we're, I feel like the disconnect is happening, honestly, is in just the communication and educational components. Because what I'm hearing from TEC is, there's lagoon issues, there's problems in the lagoons, how can we help? In the lagoon, how can we help? And so this is an area that they feel like, okay, if the water quality is not good in the lagoon right now, let's check the outfalls, let's check the stormwater. And then hearing you just share that, I think it's like, hey, we are doing this, 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 and this, and TEC probably didn't know that. So I don't know, and this will probably take some time, but I would be, I would like to see us maybe focus some of our efforts, maybe with social media, with our communications, incorporating hot topics such as water quality, if that's an issue, and these topics that come up, that is of concern of our citizens. Us trying to push out some of this information for transparency purposes. So when issues arise, or when they're, when we're looking for potential improvements, I, I feel like I'm seeing this as a trend, like these issues are arising, and it's like, hey, did you know we're doing X, Y, and Z? And it's like, oh, we didn't, we didn't know that. So I think if we can maybe shift the focus that way, because I, I think that's what Member Robinson was saying too, like just hearing that, it's like, wow, we are putting a lot of effort, a lot of money into this, and it is important, and we do care. It's now, how do we best communicate that to the citizens? Is where I would kind of like to see a shift, and see, once we are communicating that, are we still having the same concerns being brought before council?
Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I appreciate you asking that question. Because I, I felt we did care, of course. I mean, we've got a whole department that is all about clean water. The challenge that we have, we do have a TEC who cares also, and want to do the right thing. My challenge has always been, I think, one of the, the members of the public said that I didn't believe in studies. I didn't say that. What I don't believe in is a study that has no ending. And when you want to study something and have a document, my question is, what are you going to do with that document? And when we know that the challenge we have is the phosphorus in the water, and we're doing everything we can today about the phosphorus, whatever contaminants we find based on the study, what are we supposed to do with that? Because we're putting our money in what we know is causing harm to the Indian River Lagoon. Now, there may be secondary, or third, or fourth things that are being put in the water that we can't do anything with. We may, by happenstance, be pulling those things out with what we're doing today, but our focus is on the phosphorus, because we know that's the big, the big deal. So I'm with Councilman Robinson when I say that I really like to do studies to make sure that we're going to get an end result that is going to help the situation. But when you get a study out there and you find 100 different contaminants, and then people use that study to say, we got all these contaminants in the water, city, what are you going to do about it? When we're trying to fight the major contaminant, which in my opinion, I'm hearing, that is phosphorus.
Nitrogen.
And nitrogen. And nitrogen. So, and, and there you go, two components. But there certainly is a lot more stuff in the water. But we're certainly putting in our stormwater ponds and everything to try to get rid of as much as we possibly can before it gets there. Our challenge will always be that we don't, and I think, I'd say Member Shifalo, but I think Ms. Shifalo said that, I want to call it a river, but it doesn't flow. And that's our challenge. The Indian River does not flow, and it's basically a big basin that has these contaminants going in, it's going to the bottom, there's no place for it to go. I told the City Manager, one of the best thing that ever happened to us in the last few weeks was Ian. It was Ian, because it moved the water. And that's what we're looking for it to do, because if you got movement of water, you got dilution of some of the contaminants that you have in there. Unfortunately, it wasn't enough, but at least there was some movement. And so we're going to continue to, to do the best that we possibly can. We got a tax on the road now that says it's directly for Indian River Lagoon cleanup, and also improvements. I mean, we've had a big change in the amount of fertilizer that we use on our, on our property now. We're changing out all the sewer systems that are close to the river, to make sure those contaminants don't get in there. I just don't want us to, to be bumping heads when it comes down to what we all want and desire, and that is for the Indian River Lagoon to be clean. I'd say it over and over again. When I came here in 1979, I used to go under the bridges with a chicken bone and get as many blue crabs as I wanted to. You can't do that anymore, and that's sad to me, because back in, in, in 79, 80 timeframe, it was just natural, it was there. I never thought about it being contaminated. But now, we can't do that, and, and that's pretty sad, because that's not something that you can have your kids do anymore. You can only tell them that this used to happen, it's not something they can experience themselves. So I, I hope that the TEC understands that we want the same thing they do, but we have to be very smart with what we want to do, with the monies that we have, and having this study, is this going to be beneficial, or it could have ended up being detrimental because we will find that the study that the city paid for, which will be announced, found all of these different contaminants in the water, and the city's not doing anything about all of those contaminants. And to me, that's, that's not going to be a reasonable thing for us to do, or we, or what we can afford. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Member Nelson.
Okay. I'm one of the sorghia concrete here. The work done by Geoscientec, when do we expect that to be complete? And I'm not sure.
They were awarded in January, and it was a year project for the first part, so.
So January.
So probably early next year, we would have drafts of forthcoming.
As part of that project, they're doing inventory of stormwater management and water quality problems, correct?
Yeah, they're, they're going to apply the SWIL model to, to load the basins again and look at what they call hotspots.
Okay.
So that may be a spot that's above a baffle box, and maybe it's, it may be a large basin that, that doesn't have enough treatment in it yet. They're going to identify those hotspots and create the projects to address them.
Okay. Is that just phosphorus and nitrogen, or are there other things that they will look at?
Well, they're taking what the backbone is, which is the BMAP, which is a nitrogen phosphorus-focused study. You know, if you take a look at what the DEP looks at, the KIRW is looking at a lot of other parameters, though those are robust sensors, they, they float. But yes, they're building their model with the SWIL model, which was built as a nitrogen phosphorus loading model. So they won't necessarily be able to pick out if it's a suspended solid issue, or if it's a, you know, non-chemical pollution, or something along those lines. Things like point sources, you're not going to get in that type of model, you probably would miss them in a sampling situation too, unless you just happen to catch a point source coming out at the right time.
Okay. So basically, it's phosphorus, nitrogen, and they might catch something else. And my, my hearing's off too, so sorry.
No, I think the, I think the outcome will be a nitrogen-focused, nitrogen phosphorus-focused product, because at the end of the day, the goal would be to set a menu of product, projects that can go to SOAR. And then go to 319 grants, which are all going to be hedged on the impaired waterway, which is a nitrogen phosphorus impairment.
Okay.
So we wouldn't go to SOAR and ask them to help us with another item, because SOAR was built for reducing based upon the BMAP, which is nitrogen phosphorus goals. So we would want their projects to match our grant goals, and not be looking to, to necessarily deviate from that.
Okay. That being said, what I would like to do, and I had sort of thought about this all along, I would like to wait till the BMAP comes out, because you're talking two months. But in the meantime, I would really like to hear from Dr. Jacoby, if we could.
From who?
Dr. Jacoby. And he is the lead biologist from St. John's. I understand St. John's is doing some testing. I'd like to know what they're testing, where they're testing, what, what he might suggest to us in terms of what can be done, what maybe we need to look at, how we're doing, how the seagrass is doing. I think we all have a lot of questions that he can answer, and if he'd be willing to make a presentation, that would be great. He has, he has studied the Indian River and the seagrass, I think, for 30 years. So if anybody knows the answers, he'll know. Maybe do it during presentations, and ask him to talk to us for 10, 15 minutes.
I'm not opposed to, to that, I'm not quite as familiar as you are, but I think that an, an update on something like that would be good. We certainly have had presentations.
So Dr. Jacoby presented to the Save the Indian River Lagoon in March. I, I sent you that video, and.
And he actually said some good things.
Yes.
He's very interesting. He was talking about septic tanks versus sewer spills, he was talking about seagrass, what he thought we needed to increase the amount of seagrass. And like I said, he's been studying this for 30 years. So I think he probably has some answers. I think all, we could all use those answers.
You good?
I'm good.
I would just probably conclude this discussion, kind of agreeing with, with you, Member Nelson, that if we're going to look at any kind of testing, I think we wait for the two months and, and get the results there. But I do want to say, I, I have always known, and I, I think in our heart of hearts we know, how much our staff, and Kevin, and anybody else involved with Indian River Lagoon care. They certainly don't come to work and say, I don't care. I mean, we have more baffle boxes, and if I'm wrong, I'm sure Laura Lee will catch me, but we have more baffle boxes than anybody else in the county. We have more baffle, I'm sorry, we have more baffle boxes than Palm Bay and Melbourne combined. We're further ahead in the Indian River Lagoon plan that came out when we did the sales tax referendum in 2016, which I, when I ran, campaigned for everywhere I went, which I think everybody up here did. I saw a chart recently, and I can't quote it, because I, I don't have it in front of me, but we are way ahead of any other city. I think we've taken this much more seriously, and I know I'll get in trouble by every other city on that. So I just want to say that sometimes we talk more about what we haven't done than what we have done. And we have done a lot. And, and I, Laura Lee, I totally, your visual is outstanding with the seagrass. I mean, it just is. It reminds me of old times. I haven't seen that kind of seagrass. It gives me goosebumps. It's like, dang gum. So yeah, I get what you're saying, let's, let's do what's going on down there up here. So with that being said, we need to work hard on, man, getting that seagrass like we just saw it. And, and again, you know, I'm certainly not a scientist, but I, I did teach biology long enough to know the word validity is important in testing. And I'm not sure, listening to Kevin, that we have an absolute validity of what we would be. be testing, because it sounds like every test would be different. Um, but I, I, I'm not opposed to, you know, figuring out exactly what's going on in there, which isn't getting us the seagrass. I'm just not sure that we have the capability to do it in a way that would be valid. So, with that, um, anything else from, let me just ask you this, um, and I, because when you were talking about, do we not want to know? My question was, um, uh, staff, um, whoever wants to answer it, what would be the reason you would say we don't need to test? What would be the reason you would say, don't test? Who would say, would that be Kevin too?
Look, I think there's two parts of that. One is, if we're talking about water quality and we're talking about nitrogen and phosphorus, we have models and things set up that tell us pretty well what's coming out of our basins that have been accepted by the state, and we work through the state's D P. Dr. Jacoby, you're right, he's the lead environmental scientist, been three decades. This is, if you hear him talk, this is, this is what he does. Uh, so there's two sides of it. That, that's when we talk about water quality. I will say, there are circumstances where we do test. We have a spill reported to us on our MS four permits. We have a, we have a pollution prevention plan. We go and we test to ensure that nothing, say petroleum, gets into a waterway. Um, you know, when we suspected a sewer spill, the water was tested around it for fecal. You know, those things are reactionary testing that do take place, that, that's part of a separate, that's not really trying to figure out the water quality of the lagoon. That's protecting the resource completely, pollution protection. Uh, we do that, Sandy will do that, that's a visual inspection, that's a water test if we need it, grab samples, completely separate from trying to do a water quality test. Um, so I just don't want to, you know, when we talk about, want to know what's in the water, we may go out there because someone reports a potential chemical spill, and we will investigate that, and that would be checking for petroleum product, how to carbons, those types of things. That don't mean we pull that sample to test it for nitrogen. We'd be very specific in those tests. Um, so that's a little challenge, just wanted to make sure you understood that it's not that we don't, you know, anytime someone reports a pollution, uh, you know, the, the state does as well, DOTs and MS four on their own, they have to test for any pollution reported, uh, to make sure that we don't have a point source leaking into the waterways. So, those testing are going to be ongoing forever. You know, anyone reports something, we're going to investigate it. It may be a case where it's a visual inspection, I don't need to test it, because I know that I've not seen what they're reporting. But from a water quality standpoint, we have the, the knowledge base built on other people to give us a plan to build towards, towards nitrogen and phosphorus. So, that's why I'm comfortable on the, that side. If you, if you wanted us to do a robust testing plan, we could come back and, and develop that for you. I just, in a magnitude of scale, you can't do it for fifty thousand. To really do it and hit every outfall at the same moment, we would need numerous sampling points created, and we'd need that to, to really be able to say that this outfall three is worse than outfall seven. You'd have to test them at the same moment, because they do change with every rainfall event. So, to do a real testing program to be developed, it would be a much more robust, and that's in my opinion, we would wait for GeoSynTech to come back and say, I haven't been able to develop enough with the modeling. I want to see testing, and they would develop for us the parameters of a testing program to continue that water quality goal of putting a decade together of water quality plans.
Well, one, then one problem with the testing that is proposed is that it doesn't match up with the fifty thousand dollar price tag that went with the motion, or, or went with the recommendation.
In, in my opinion, no, because I, I think it would have to be more to, to really get a, if, if the goal was to test to compare two locations, you have to test them at the same moment, in the same rain event. Otherwise, you're going to get the variable of, uh, the car washes and the, and the fertilizer usage that happens in a, in a normal event. So, that, that's a challenge there, that I think it would be, just, just looking at our research, what we've done in the past, that's what we feel. We don't want to go to the Kilroy level, because those are, uh, you know, I think the Saint John spends about three quarters of a million dollars just maintaining them every year. So, we wouldn't go to that level, but just our consultants who have done auto samplers in the past, we benchmarked that money to test all our outfalls at the same moment, ten times a year. It's about a half a million dollar commitment. Um, so, and again, that's where you get into the expense of that versus, you know, to put it in perspective, half a million dollars is almost a mile of sliplining for us. That comes off of our capital improvements that goes to this testing, this extra testing program, that, that means we aren't getting pipes repaired, uh, for that duration, and we would be coming back to ask for the funding increase to make sure that we can bring back those repairs, once they get taken, once they get diverted. So, I, I like to get things in the ground, because we do balance repairing pipes with, uh, as you're aware, as we're pumping and doing pipe repairs after hurricanes, we are balancing that with keeping the water quality programs going too. And every dollar that's used, uh, that we aren't putting in the ground is something that, that I think if the end goal doesn't lead us to a, a, a project or a enhancement, it's, it could be fifty thousand that we didn't do, uh, some items we got till citizens were not pulling, uh, the grates out to replace due to, uh, the constraints of this. And, and a lot of times, I like to get the tangible fixes in place, uh, that we know about in the short term. Um, but like I said, we're, when we get to the end of the program with GeoSynTech, if they were to come back, recommend monitoring, we would certainly bring that forward as one of our capital, our projects would be to incorporate the modeling they feel they, monitoring they feel they need.
Well, I think that, uh, again, Member Nelson's, uh, thought about waiting to see what, uh, GeoSynTech says might be a, a good idea, but it sounds like we have some work to do to be able to do anything with the validity, especially for fifty thousand dollars. Um, with that, uh, we need to make a recommenda- uh, not a recommendation, a, uh, give direction.
I thought this one, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I thought this one was, uh, either to agree.
Provide direction to staff on establishing the stormwater monitoring program. Provide direction.
So, my, my direction would be for us to do exactly what, um, Member Nelson said. We'll wait until, uh, we hear back from GeoSynTech and.
I mean, it's two months, but my second recommendation was to go ahead and have Dr. Jacoby come in and talk to us about the river and different problems with the river.
I think we can do that, but I wouldn't make that part of this motion.
Right.
I, I would, let's decide what we're going to do with this, and we can certainly add that aspect to it.
Then I would wait until GeoSynTech's came back.
Before.
Before we make that decision.
Okay. I think that was my motion.
And, and I think that, and I, and again, along those lines, the concerns that I have is that, um, that the cost that is part of the recommendation is valid, because it sounds like you're, you're talking well over fifty thousand dollars, and we don't, I haven't gotten an exact number, but we need to know exactly what it's going to be. But, uh, again, I think the GeoSynTech part is very important. And again, if we're going to test, we need to make sure what we're testing for and that our test is valid to what it's testing. But that's, again, beyond what we need to talk about right now.
Right. And that is actually the, the challenge too, because you, you can say, I want to spend fifty thousand dollars on a, on a, um, a, a report or investigation, and it doesn't go anywhere. It's not enough there.
Goes back to your original concern.
Yes, it's not there, there, for sure.
But what's the end result? What's?
Right. So, I, I think I made a motion that says we just wait until, uh, after GeoSynTech, uh, give their report to, to council to make a decision about the next steps.
So, do we want a second?
Well, I'm going to, I got a motion from Vice Mayor.
Okay.
That's your second.
That was it.
I have a, I have a second. A second from Member Nelson, roll call vote.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Robinson?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor.
Yes.
Let's see what they say and go from there. Yes.
Can I add one other thing? I think part of it is, I'm looking at when we had their last hurricane, we had the problem with this high street lift station, and that was one of the projects that we were trying to get that. And I keep thinking, you know, if we had been able to have the money to do it last year, we wouldn't have had that problem. And so, I'm always sort of hesitant when these things come up, because we don't need any more sewer spills. We need to make sure that we take care of what we have in front of us, um, so we don't have those kind of things happening.
And I believe there's some immediate work going on with that right now, that, um, the generator issue. Right. Just kind of wanted to get that in there. Um, and do you want to, uh, add anything now concerning, um, the, uh, presentation?
So, I would like to have us agree to have a presentation with Dr. Jacoby, because I have questions for him. I'm sure everybody else has questions for him, and I think he's probably the guy to answer those questions.
And I, I, uh, City Manager, I, I, I hear you, and I definitely, uh, you sent the video, we've seen him. Um, you know, I, I guess we need to first inquire with him to see if that's possible, because, um, it would be a presentation's time, and if we do, we don't want a whole lot of other self with that.
Yeah.
Yeah, he, he, he's willing to come to city councils and.
If we can get him to our next presentations, I think that would be really good, and probably need to just have him by himself. I mean, no other presentations, because he will take some time, I think. All right, um, let's see. Yeah, we did vote on that. All right, petitions, petitions and requests from the public take two. Sit down. Sit down. You coming or you going?
I'm coming.
All right, then come on up. Come on, yes, 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 yes.
Laura Lee Thompson, thirty-five fifty Irwin Avenue. I was going to go home and watch the basketball game, but I, I, Vice Mayor, I could not let you get away with what you said about Hurricane Ian being good for the river. We just had fifteen inches of rain dumped into a system that has greater than a year residency time. There is no water movement that's going to happen. We, you have overloaded lift stations dumping sewage into people's yards from Hurricane Ian. We've had, because of the sewage that went into the lagoon, we saw it in the, on the, um, in the Sandpoint Park ponds. When you put sewage in the water, it sucks all the wa- oxygen out of the water, and then you have fish kills. They've had fish kills further south from Hurricane Ian. It was a horrible thing. Look at the color of the river now. It's brown, like the Saint John's River. It, it, it's, it was, Hurricane Ian was horrible for the Indian River. The scientists are aghast at, at what happened, and we took the brunt of it up here. They didn't have it quite as bad down south, because they didn't get as much rainfall. But we're spending a lot of time talking about, you know, how to fix our stormwater and what's going into the, the, the river. With sea level rise, eventually, our stormwater conveyances are going to stop functioning, because the river's going to be so high, the stormwater is not going to be able to go into the river. And that happened in some cases during Ian. You know, you had, you had pipes and ditches that had nowhere to go, and then you had the, the, the storm, stormwater backup in the neighborhoods, because the, the stormwater had nowhere to go. We should be trying to figure out how to not put stormwater in the lagoon in the first place, and that's low-impact development, that's going to help some. But we, you, if, if you, if you could filter stormwater to where it was good enough to drink in a hospital, fresh water going into the lagoon is still a pollutant, and it's changed the salinity of the river, and we're, we're never going to get seagrass coming back good, we're never going to get oysters and clams coming back good, as long as we keep dumping that much fresh water into a closed system that has no circulation. We, it, it's just, it's impossible. So, I, I, I hope Chuck will come. He, he's a fabulous speaker, he's really, really smart, he's a lot smarter than I am, but, you know, I've been on the river my entire life. It is different now than it was when I was a kid. We should be trying to figure out how we can do, use forested wetlands and, and send the water west, instead of continuing to, to put it in the river, no matter how much it's been filtered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Oh, wait, 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 Vice Mayor. Hey, come back.
Come on back. I'm not going to let you get away with that. I, I, I think you misunderstood me. I was talking about just the movement. I understand all the pollutants and all the stuff, but we have no movement in the river at all, and I was only talking about the move. If you have movement, then you take some of the pollutants away.
What movement did we have?
The wind moves the river. Yes, it does.
Yeah, it does.
Yes, it does.
It does.
You can't tell me the wind doesn't move there. You see it all the time. That's how you have run seas and everything.
Right.
And that's what I was saying. Only the movement of the river. I understand all the other stuff, all the pollutants. We had no place for the water to go, so it had to go in, inside the river. I understand that, Laura. So, I understand what you're saying, but I think you can agree with me. I, when specifically talking about movement, and actually, that's what I'm saying, if we had movement of the Indian River, we wouldn't have as much pollutants that is sitting still in the bottom of the river.
Yes.
That's all I was saying. You agree with that?
Yeah, you're correct. I agree with that.
That's all I was saying.
I agree with that.
There you go.
Wind and the combination of wind and fifteen inches of rainfall, still not good.
Then he will out. He want to make sure he did, yeah, I got you. Anybody else for petitions or requests? Okay, we're very good, thank you. Uh, we move to the mayor's report, to a council report. Uh, I'm just going to add one thing, because it's apropos right now. I was at, um, Park Avenue Baptist Church, um, School, I think last Wednesday, and presented a young man, Clayton Carroll, with a letter from the, um, mayor framed, because he sent me a video that he was down working on the river and, um, you know, wants to make sure that everybody knows it's important to work on the river. So, I gave a little presentation, and you may have seen it at some point, where the little girl walks down the beach and throws a starfish into the, and the, the man runs by and says, you know, what are you doing? I'm, well, I'm throwing the starfish. Why are you doing that? Because if I don't, it's going to die. And he goes a little further on his jog, he stops and he looks, he says, but there's so many of them, you can't make a difference. She throws it in, and she says, it did to that one. So, the point I'm making is, and I, and when I presented, if you call present, I kind of had a little sting, and man, they got a lot of kids down there. But, I mean, it was pretty much a full thing, I, you know, my PowerPoint started off with, how old do you have to be to make a difference? And, uh, then I showed that, and then I showed the video that Clayton had sent me. And basically, the whole thing was, you know, when it comes to the river, the lagoon, and other things in life, we, you make a difference at any age, you just got to care enough to make a difference. You got to care enough to make a difference. And I really feel like it's kind of apropos with kind of some of the things we're talking about, and it does frustrate me sometimes when, you know, we, you know, and, and Laura Lee, I appreciate it sometimes when you say, we can do something else, it's great, because I get, I got it, um, I went to another Indian River Lagoon thing down at Saint Mark's Episcopal and spoke about the Indian River Lagoon, me of all people, right? Um, but, uh, the Cocoa, uh, council members were down there as well, and they were talking to me about all the things we're doing up here on the lagoon, and they're talking about how they want to emulate what we're doing. And I'm like, man, sometimes when I sit in our meetings, there's, there's people that feel like we're just doing nothing but throwing sewage in there. Nobody wants to do that. And as you know, Laura Lee, probably better than anybody, they had a real sewage problem down south, and I don't know why, because they didn't get as much rain as we did, but they threw it, they didn't throw, they didn't do it on purpose. But, um, I'm real proud of the effort we're making, but I'm proud of a young man who's seven years old to send me a video and said, you know, Mayor Diesel, can you get the word out, we need help down at the river. Clayton Carroll, and it was impressive time. So, with that, I'm going to go this way, uh, um, let's start with Member Stokel. Okay. Tang?
I love it.
Vice Mayor.
I'm passing.
Oh, Member Robinson.
Oh, Boys and Girls Club.
There we go.
Couple of fundraisers and breakfasts and.
Mike, Mike.
Oh, your mic. No one knows you were there now.
Oh, Boys and Girls Club.
There you go.
Couple of fundraisers, uh, I attended, um, uh, over the, um, uh, the last week or Couple of fundraisers, uh, I attended, um, uh, over the, um, uh, the last week or so. And they were all good and it's wonderful that we are doing things to help our, uh, young folks, uh, to be, um, better as they get older and, and growing up. And it's wonderful that, um, to see people who are true, who are humanitarian to, uh, and give their time and their, uh, their, uh, resources to the improvement of others. Today, I, um, I, uh, went, uh, went to a, I guess, a Zoom and, uh, uh, talked about housing and, uh, what is it?
NIMBY.
NIMBY?
Yep.
Yeah, NIMBY, thank you. Uh, NIMBY today and, uh, it was quite interesting and it kind of paints a picture of where we're going in the future. And the thing that, uh, you know, and we have to be very careful uh, about, uh, some of the decisions we make when we make them based on, um, uh, NIMBYism. And, uh, when people are, uh, against something because it changes their little environment. Uh, so we had to be careful with that. And, um, uh, of course, there is a, a great anticipation, uh, from the, for the future of, uh, the housing shortage is going to get worse. And how the, uh, how we are going to make decisions to handle that. But, uh, that, that, that is-
Uh, well, let me just add to that real quick because I was at the same, I don't know what we would call that, but it was an online seminar. I listened to that. And, um, I, I was very impressed overall, but clearly that would came from, uh, a lot of developers and background. But you notice the one question they had, that when he asked questions, he said, we got a whole bunch of people wanting to know about balance. Because I was wondering the same thing. You know, you do have to listen to the people too. And, uh, you know, because it was pretty much, you know, this is what the developers need to do to be able to move forward. I agree. Obviously, um, I'm as far as much affordable housing as I can possibly do. And I do want to at least add this because I know you would want to do that too. What's the difference between affordable housing and conventional housing? Financing, it's not the price. There's different financing for affordable housing. And, uh, I found that interesting. That's the one thing I really got out of that. Didn't mean to interject, but when you said that, I thought, well, you know, there is a balance that at the end, there was enough people asked that question. The guy said, that's the biggest overwhelming question I'm having. What about balance between the, the people who say not in my backyard and the people who want to build? There, there needs to be a balance. And it seems like when we speak here, even when it comes to environmental things, we need to get together, you know, kind of on the, on the plants. Let's get together. So same thing. Sorry to interject.
Hmm, no, very good.
Member Nelson.
I can be so quick. First year anniversary of the Boys and Girls Club. So we made first, well, technically it's December 1st, but nobody wanted to do a one-year anniversary on December 1st. So technically 11 months. But we're up and alive and running and teaching the kids about all sorts of things.
Doing a good job, making a big difference. City manager.
Uh, yes, um, we've listed, uh, the 2022 legislative priorities that council approved last year. They are due to the Space Coast League of City and Florida League, um, tomorrow. So if there's any adjustments that you would like to make to the 2022 for your 2023 legislative priorities, please let us know.